Adam Steele, our new business administrator, SAU business administrator. Yes, welcome, Adam.
You should get him on camera.
Yeah.
The people at home know who he is.
Yep, yep, put a face on the name. So, he came with high recommendations from Wyndham and so, you know, we're sure he's going to fulfill all those expectations. So, welcome, Adam. All right, and welcome to the first meeting, Sohegan meeting of the school year. We're going to start off, as we normally do, with the principal's report with Mr. Rob Scully.
So, thank you and welcome back, everyone. The building has been active all summer, but specifically the last week with a lot of activity and I will share some during the principal's report. But the weather is not cooperating to make it feel like fall, but it definitely is upon us and we're excited next week to welcome the students. So, a few thank you's just to begin. As I mentioned, the building even during the summer, very, very busy. Our faculty and staff engaged in some intensive summer curriculum work outlined, as I said, and leave a little bit later on in the report. But just a thank you to the faculty and staff. The leadership team, you know, Kathy White and Pete Gagnon, Dick Miller, Karen Chininess, you know, Meg, all worked very hard this summer to help support and frame some of that work. Our facilities folks were wonderful. If you've made your way around the campus, it looks great like it does every year. We had a lot of parent volunteers for different things this summer, specifically Registration Day recently. We wanted to publicly thank them. Of course, Mary Ann and Betty, who are leaving us, I wanted to publicly thank them and I wanted to put the context, they just don't do a job in a vacuum at the district office. It's been understated, I think, how much their work actually affects students. It might seem like it's far away from the student experience, but what they've done for the students of Amherst and Mount Vernon. Also, the Amherst Community Foundation, we plan on, you know, addressing them as a school directly in the near future, but I want to publicly thank them. It just cannot, words cannot express our gratitude for what they've done for the students of the entire community and specifically for our campus. So, a few things, I mentioned the summer learning that has gone on, the Literacy Institute, and I apologize, I, this is on SharePoint, I don't know if it made it into the packet, so if you want to open up in SharePoint, I think, I noticed Dave had copied it. It has a couple of links and, you know, that's how much I rely on Mary Ann for my reminders. So, it is on SharePoint if you want to call it up. So, our summer learning included the Literacy Institute, English and Social Studies teachers completed year three of work designed to continue working on our curriculum. The institute itself is designed, Christine leads that with our coaches. She does a great job and if you look at that link, the goals and the intentions are outlined and the day's work is outlined. I would encourage you to take a look at that and I'll just summarize it briefly by saying that the efforts of the institute is to create the curriculum frameworks for our humanities courses, our nine through 12 areas in social studies, you know, aligning the curriculum with standards, working on the competencies, creating the assessments. So, what you'll be able to see by next fall is our deadline, 2017, but you'll see it before that and we can give you access to the framework. All of the social studies and English courses articulated very, very clearly, every unit, the topic, the essential question, the enduring understandings, the text that are going to be used, the assessments. And I'm just kind of putting that on our radar because the more we talk about competency education and the more we look at our performance assessments and the more we talk about grading and reporting out, it would be great to just have a fundamental understanding of what the curriculum looks like. So, that link, I hope, will be helpful. As I said, it's three years' work and it really came to fruition this year and so we're really, really proud of it. The other institute was the first year of the STEAM Institute. Science, Technology, English, Art and Music teachers began work to examine existing curriculum, identify areas for integration and train in new technologies. So, if you've got a context of the Lit Institute where they are at year three, think of year one with our science, technology, engineering, art and math folks. The agenda is supplied and you'll notice the agenda includes some really exciting work. Sue Downer was very, very instrumental in designing this as well. So, they had workshops on 3D design, big data, using probes, robotics, programming. They brought in some outside expertise. They talked amongst themselves about the existing STEM curriculum that already exists in our program of studies, but identifying it and then how we're going to evolve it. Again, this is, the intention tonight is just to kind of put it on our radar. We'd love to talk more about it, but we are really excited about looking at our existing curriculum and building some new curriculum relative to, in this case, they decided to call it STEAM because they're very interested in, especially things with the 3D printing and art being part of this. Because as we remember, STEM or STEAM is a curriculum, really. It's interdisciplinary, it's real-world application, it's transferring of knowledge into performance tasks. So, as I said, it exists, so we have a STEM curriculum, but we really want to do a much more organized and formal accountability of it and then how we're evolve it. So, again, that was some summer work that we're very excited about. Please feel free to, you know, scan the agenda and we'd be really excited to talk about it going further. You'll also notice on the there, there were site visits. We were able to go to Wyndham High School to examine their physical plant relative to STEM and we've made a contact with Salem High School, which might be just as, if not more helpful for us because they're literally in the process of their redesign and remodeling. So, they're exactly where we, well, they're a little ahead of where we are, but it would be nice to visit the physical plant and discuss the classrooms as well as how they're working on their curriculum.
So, Rob, I'm curious about the E in STEAM.
Yes.
The E in STEM was engineering.
Yeah.
The E in STEAM is now English?
Does it say English?
The first time you said English, second time you said engineering.
Oh, that's just my personal bias. I used to tell, anytime I see an E, did I even write it?
Yeah, you wrote it.
Dave, did you know Rob was an English teacher here?
Yeah, but not a very good proofreader.
I did know that.
Evidently, yes.
No, he's just biased, like he said, so now it's.
All right, so it was not an over.
Ah, David, you passed. That was a little check in to see if you were. Don't get nervous, sorry about that. Yeah, that's engineering.
Okay.
I'm not trying to pull a fast one.
I heard that one too, Pete.
I heard that too, so I'm glad you asked.
All right, okay.
Yeah, that's just my, that's a slip, that's my bias. I'm an old English teacher and when I see an E, I put English. So, don't get nervous, yeah, engineering, so.
Rob, which group will go to Salem?
Um, if we do something similar, we, it was during the summer, so it was less access to maybe teachers, but, you know, and Peter might have some ideas, but it would be, you know, building leadership, you know, we'd invite John, Adam, you know, some teachers, board members.
There's a couple of board members that have expressed some concerns about the classrooms. So, maybe it would be the best answer to have.
Yeah, and I think in our first, yeah, in the first visit too, it's, you know, summer sometimes difficult, but it was open to the same group I just outlined and, yeah, so this one.
Yeah, we were all invited to the Wyndham visit.
So, we're trying to set up, that's okay, we're trying to set up a second meeting to Wyndham and with Bethany Burnscone, who's our dean of instruction at the middle school. Her connections in Salem and Wyndham and certainly with Adam's connections in Wyndham. We want to set up two appointments, one in Wyndham, one in Salem, and we'll have a wide net of invitees, so please feel free to join us. We'll have a time and a place and where to meet and all that. Hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we'll set those up.
One of the schools.
That was my, I was supposed to go, but then I got tied up with something and wasn't able to make it.
Oh, okay.
That's why I was going to ask if there were schedules in the second meeting.
Peter, is there a plan for additional schools as well?
We don't have a designated, we don't have a real plan right now. The plan really is, so we're looking at renovating here and Salem is building, renovating and building all at the same time. Wyndham has already completed theirs, but the world, the world of technology is, so we're really in the, you know how we were in the industrial age? We're really into the digitalization age almost. So, we want to kind of back up and take a wide look at what's happening in our world, but the two close ones were the ones we thought we'd cherry pick first. And then I want to talk to the boards, probably again, maybe on the 22nd, because I think there's some other board members in other districts that might want to go, and set a timeframe for visiting some other places out of state or out of New Hampshire and in New England and maybe further. So, we want to also have a list of those once we do some research. We've got a couple on our radar, so I hope that makes sense. So, you'll be hearing about the next two and I might be asking you for some times or days that might fit better, okay?
But the chief reason that Peter and I were interested in this at least, and I thank Dwayne, was because we were already going through the architectural design of the new STEM labs and we didn't know what the STEM curriculum was going to be. So, this is going to put that off later is, so at this point, the architect, I think, can't be on hold forever. So, what is the status of that? Is that going to, is that moving forward now or?
No, it's not on hold.
What's that?
They're not on hold. My understanding was.
Okay, so this is a peripheral thing then?
Yeah.
It's changed its role.
We already approved the firm that was going to start with the architectural design and they're going to be meeting with staff members, teachers, administrators, board members, as well as reviewing the space and looking at our current curriculum and talking with in particular administrators. And I don't know, Rob and Peter, if you have anything to add to that?
Well, I think the timeline of when we'd want to do site visits and when the firm is in their collect and community forum timeframe is the same, if that makes sense. So, while they're doing more, getting feedback from teachers and the public, et cetera, that was when we'd be doing site visits, so.
It might be a good idea, actually, to have some of the teachers that have involved with this STEAM curriculum development and review that they've been working, you know, all summer on. I know from Rob that they're really excited about it. I don't think they would have any issue coming and talking about our curriculum and the curriculum development work that they've done and curriculum review work that they've done, and that might be a good agenda item for October or November.
Well, that's what Peter said, right?
What did Peter say?
That we would have a review of the STEM curriculum sometime in October, right?
Well, they've been, they've been doing it. They've done a lot of work over the summer.
No, reviewed by the board.
By the board. There was supposed to be a presentation here going over the curriculum.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that. So, I guess we'll have to, yeah, I thought it was going to be a presentation of the curriculum review work that they've been doing, so maybe we're saying the same thing, just two different ways.
The same thing, just different timeframe.
But my point.
The question from day one with this whole architectural study was, what is the STEM curriculum going to look like five years and what are the plans so that we know that what the architect is doing aligns with the curriculum? That's what we were told in June, we're not ready to do that yet, we'll get back to you in September and tell you when we will have the presentation ready to go over the STEM curriculum. And that presentation for the envisioned curriculum is supposed to be in October or November.
So, everyone's saying the same thing from where I'm sitting.
Yeah, I think that's still the plan.
That sounds like, maybe we're expecting a little more detail than just the activities of a STEM review, of, you know, curriculum review committee.
In October, Peter?
Yep.
Do you mean? Oh, yeah, that's, if, that's what you need. Tonight is just the, put it on the dashboard, the overview of the summer work, but if October makes sense for.
That's what we were told, the October. But I guess my point is, is that the whole purpose of this was to understand if the architect was moving in the same direction as the STEM curriculum was. That was, that was the purpose of this. And what I'm hearing is, is that that's not going to happen, but I still want this review. I'm not saying that we should not do the review. All I'm saying is that it seems there's no tie-in at this point. Is that correct? And that, that's the answer, that's the answer. I just wanted to know what, where we are.
Well, I think, I think we're going to need to have a board discussion on that and it'd be, you know, probably best, you know, next month when, because typically we have a full board here because I think we all have different understandings. I know that you and Pete met with Rob and Peter Warburton and expressed concerns and the desire to have a laid-out specific curriculum. I'm not sure the rest of us discussed that and.
I would not describe it as a laid-out curriculum, just a visionary statement of where we're headed and what kind of courses might be added. That's all we're looking at.
I think I can make quick work. We are very excited to do that in October.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, if that is the case, then my question is, shouldn't it be in line with the, with the progress of the architect?
Which, I mentioned earlier, if you look at the architectural timeline, I think it aligns perfectly with where they'll be collecting and holding public discussions and getting students involved. So, that September, October timeline where they're coming back and soliciting that input. So, I, you know, I really feel like everything is aligned and you'd have a nice detailed vision of the STEM. And I don't want to forget that it already exists and where we're heading is also exciting, so, I mean, I feel like.
What exists?
STEM interdisciplinary work and the.
Well, you haven't, I guess I haven't seen it, so.
I think we just have to get.
To me, it does not exist, right?
Exactly, and therein lies the rub. So, we'll make, we'll, we'll get you to see the light.
Can I just ask one question that may ease some concerns about this architecture review? I forget the exact dollar amount we provided, but they're doing, you know, some maybe four or five-month study to develop the idea for what this STEM lab upgrade would look like. That doesn't mean that what they end with is going to be the final design of what we do. That should just be an idea that would allow us to price out what it would cost to do it and then there will be time to fine-tune it. So, if they do their work now to get the initial cut, we could still do these reviews and have time to modify things before we actually build anyway.
Exactly, and that's what we said from the beginning where it might, it might be perfect parallel, but it might be, here's their mock and we still have some work to do here, or we, we've done our work and they're, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so that may ease some of the time concerns about, hear about the curriculum before they're finished with their work, so.
You know, can I suggest maybe that John send us out, because we all received and it was a while ago, so, you know, maybe, you know, you've forgotten the timeline, but we did receive a timeline and a schedule as to what they'd be doing as far as interviewing, you know, staff, administration, looking at other schools, how, holding public forums. We did receive all that information, but maybe if John, you know, has it, even if you could send it to us over email, John Robichaud, who's our SAU Buildings and Ground Director, that would just refresh all of our memories and maybe make everybody feel a little bit more ease. And the other thing I would suggest, just a second, Pete, the other thing I would suggest is, as I said earlier, let's have this discussion in October like it was planned to be. This presentation and discussion was already planned on the October agenda and all the board members were copied, you know, on that discussion about how it was going to be an October agenda item. So, rather than taking up time at this meeting, as I said to you, Dave, copying all the board members, let's have the presentation in October. Let's, John will send out the schedule again of how this is going to go forward and if there are additional questions, then, then we can, you know, address those at the time. So, again, since that was not an agenda item tonight, let's, let's leave it the way it was as an October agenda item and let Rob finish his principal's report. Is that okay? All right, thanks.
So, summer days, as I've mentioned in the past, we really have targeted professional development, so our summer days focus primarily on groups who are working on developing curriculum, on creating assessments. And once again, we have supplied, I think, about 180 days of summer work that's going to help improve student learning. I just wanted to share with you what this week looks like. As I mentioned earlier, exciting week to be back. We had our retreat on Monday, the district welcomed back. We finished up our retreat in the afternoon. On the next page, I just summarized our retreat a little bit and the faculty participated in one and a half days of activities and work sessions designed to improve instruction and student learning. And our faculty has really, really invested in the last couple of years in, you know, creating really strong competency-based education. Our in-service day was the 31st. We have discretionary day where the school is full of teachers getting their room ready and tomorrow the building will be open and I expect, again, a large group of teachers here getting ready for Tuesday's opening. Two other things I want to highlight, just very quickly, the Sanborn Competency Design Studio. We attended that, a leadership group participated in a three-day workshop designed to guide schools in moving toward a competency-based education. So, we for years have had solid practice and had competency-based education, but the current research and current information out there is very exciting and informative, so we're trying to stay on top of things. So, a group, just not Sohegan teachers or administrators, attended that design studio and came away with a lot of good ideas. Well, to be honest with you, about 75 or 80% of it was validating and affirming what we're doing. 15% kind of made us feel good about some decisions we need to make and, you know, gave us that sense of moving forward. And then, you know, it was about 10% with some new ideas we hadn't thought of. So, you'll be hearing more of that indirectly as we share some work that's being done this year. And the PACE Summer Institute, just a quick PACE update, leadership and teachers participated in a three-day workshop to double score, calibrate and finalize this year's PACE assessment. So, I was lucky enough to join Kathy White and several others from Sohegan in attending the institute. And a quick aside, the structure of leadership for PACE has changed a little bit from centralized, from the Department of Ed, who then kind of facilitated the groups, et cetera. So, they, the New Hampshire Department of Ed has created a stipended position for, could have been any teachers around the state to be facilitators, group leaders in the different, and I believe there might be six or seven group leaders. And of those seven, six are Sohegan teachers, or of those six, five are Sohegan teachers. So, we had a chance to meet with Deputy Commissioner of Education and Mary Ann Baffaire, who's the lead from the state, and they couldn't say enough about our teachers and their facilitation skills and being leaders in this. So, if you remember a few years ago, we talked about PACE and being involved in it, the payoff that we would get. So, the capacity within our building now is fantastic and there's some expertise that didn't exist a couple of years ago. So, that was exciting news for us. Updates NIASC, we'll be hearing that more and more, where we have put in for a visit fall of 2018, we're waiting to hear back. So, we will begin this year many work sessions designed to look at our standards for our accreditation process. So, we've got about two years for that process, but starting this September at one of our faculty meetings, we'll get our groups together and, you know, the facilitators will walk them through some of the protocols and you'll be hearing more about that. Some of you may be even invited to be part of the group. Some of the standard groups, it outlines who you need for members and a few of them board members are expected. Scheduling schedules went out, completed and communicated to students and staff during the summer. The interim review of the process and student access will be accomplished in September and November. I'm putting a schedule out there again on your radar because that's another one of those things that we're going to revisit, our schedule and as different variables change, we always look to see if it's the best schedule that serves our need. One of the last.
You're talking about daily, the daily schedule or?
Yeah, yeah, our.
The number, hours and periods and?
Yeah, that schedule. In this context, I'm talking about that schedule. You know, we went into this schedule a couple of years ago saying, at least for a two-year chunk of time, but as.
Is that up, the two years is up this year?
The two years, we extended that only because it's a negotiation year and some variables might change, so we didn't want to do all this work around the schedule and some of the variables could change relative to, you know, teaching load and that type of thing. So, we just pressed pause on that. So, this year we'll jump in and.
So, this is the eight-period day versus the seven?
Not eight versus seven per se, but we have that, what we call the skinny block in the middle and that type of thing where, you know, is there some flexibility that we want to build in or? But it originally started like eight versus seven, but now it's got different questions to be answered. But it's just, you know, the maintenance that you do as a, as a school, making sure that all your structures and, and systems are what they should be, so. The next thing's a little bit of a surprise and, you know, a little bit, you know, with some sadness but excitement for Gigi. I'm sure you heard that Gigi Clipper, dean of faculty, accepted a position at another district. Gigi absolutely was our, you know, our heart and soul and she, her strengths relative to dean of faculty were with moving teachers to their best, but as Gigi, I think, you know, realized that she could never really get away from kids probably being the majority of her folks, she really loved the classroom and really wanted to reconnect with students. So, she found a position, and again, I'm not sure if you're aware, at another school where they started a teacher training program at the high school level. So, she'll actually be teaching a class to students who are interested in becoming teachers and then working with the teachers in the district to help them with the student interns. And it's a brand-new program that the state is very interested in and so she had, she was perfect for them and unfortunately, you know, it was something that she couldn't, she couldn't resist.
She will definitely be missed. She's one of the nicest, most down-to-earth people and there are a lot of nice down-to-earth people here, so that says a lot.
So, it left us with a situation a little bit later in the summer with, you know, needing to rehire for that position. So, anytime a position opens up, our first, our first reaction is to evaluate and audit it and look for its need. Is there some sort of restructuring that could, you know, make the, reimagine the position? So, after that and realizing that relative to a few of the variables, you know, when Nicole left, we didn't rehire at that position and so some of those responsibilities are our building level. Deb, the specialized coordinator, building level coordinator, we didn't rehire, so some of that LDA responsibility has moved over. Just being in education now and the different initiatives and the expertise and, you know, whether it's PACE or moving toward a competency-based education and the fact that Gigi carried 35 supervision, observation responsibilities that in the interim time will distribute, but that was possibly too heavy for a sustainable, we feel, for the immediate, immediate future, we need to rehire at that position. It's budgeted for, but because it was so late, we might, we weren't going to get a sitting assistant that was going to go into the superintendent and say, hey, I think we open up next week. So, we are networking a little bit, we're looking at some precedent here even where we got a little bit lucky with somebody maybe in a nonprofit or even a private consultant agency who wants to get back into the, into the school setting or possibly reducing the full-time and getting a retired still, you know, wants to, you know, add to the mix. And so, the pool's going to be a little bit unique, so we're going to start that next week. And I have a copy of the post if you wanted to see it. But I wanted to recognize and thank Gigi publicly and we also just because the timing, a week ago or next week, we just wanted to inform the board of the context of Gigi's leaving and how we're heading forward.
Bob, are you going to, are you going to advertise this as a interim or permanent? When you say you're looking for somebody who's maybe retired that wants to come back, are you thinking of somebody as an interim? Because it's, you know, the school year started.
Yeah, so that, we talked, and I talked to Peter, and we'll probably talk a little bit more about what qualifier could come with it. And, you know, the write-up once, you know, there's maybe another sentence or two to give context to that. And definitely somebody coming in, we would let them know. But, you know, as I said, for me, the immediate future, a year, possibly two-year, this position still makes sense. So, we would have some kind of qualifier to, or, or language to let somebody know. We didn't, we wouldn't want somebody to jump ship, you know, thinking that it was, you know, like they're retired here in 20 years.
Career, yeah.
Right. Yeah, but it is thought of, we're just not sure what the exact qualifier would be. Because the restructuring of leadership and stuff that we've been looking at over the next couple of years, the titles are, might be irrelevant as well. Like a Dean of Faculty, two Dean of Faculty, Dean of Student, you know, deans might have the, so. But we'd definitely give the qualifiers that it's, you know, probably shorter-term than long.
Would we have an opportunity at the board level to discuss the roles and the alternatives here as opposed to just proceeding with this description, Rob? Is that something that we do?
We are not, that's not part of our purviews, hiring. That's-
I'm not talking about the individual. I'm talking about, Rob has mentioned that there, he's looked at different alternatives, restructuring it, you know, I don't know, you didn't describe the kind of restructuring. But, at some point, would we be able to see that and understand whether we really believe the position is necessary, whether we believe that there may should be two, maybe, you know, two subordinates to Kathy would be appropriate? There's a lot of ways to structure this as opposed to, would we have the opportunity to discuss that, not the individual?
That is not something we've done in the past that I'm aware of. Yeah. And it's been budgeted for already this year as a Dean of Faculty position, so.
It doesn't mean we can't change the budget. We did it all the time.
But Dave, I think, I wonder if this also helps. Those discussions that you're talking about occur in different contexts as well as we, sometimes even, you know, during the budget finance committee-
Yeah, but you're going ahead and hiring it now, and the opportunity is now to restructure, that's my point.
No, we-
We're not going to wait till the final-
So, to answer that question is, what we have outlined is what our need is next year. So, we, the answer is no then, to your question, would we have time for that? Oh, can I say that? So, we-
I think you did.
Yeah, we have the need to find next. If Gigi hadn't left, it wouldn't have been a-
I agree.
Yeah, it wouldn't have been an issue. But I think this serves both, you know, the leadership is being discussed, has been discussed, you know, as we move forward and the restructuring of it. But for next year, that need is pretty clear. We budgeted for it specifically because we knew that would be the need. So, I would say not for this, but as we go forward, I think, yes, the discussion of the roles and responsibilities and the restructure and get discussed a lot in the different subcommittees and-
I think those are the kind of talks that we'll have in October when we're starting to talk about budgets, when we're looking at the overall budgets, when we're looking at, you know-
For next year's budget, yeah.
For next year's budgets.
And I think-
And it happens a lot in the budget context, but it's still an academic, you know, informed by the academic need and to keep good instruction. But, so I hope that makes sense. So, for this, we are clear that that is our need. And quite frankly, there's with not a building-level specialized coordinator and some of the district stuff, the role has actually increased in need, not, not decreased.
So, Rob, you said earlier in your discussion on this, you said that you had considered a number of different alternatives in how to restructure this and how to maybe reconfigure it and that kind of thing. All I'm saying is, at some point, I'd like to know what those considerations were and, and maybe work with some of the board members, whether to validate those things so that we understand why we're doing what we're doing. I mean, at this point, I don't really-
So, Dave, I think what Howard said last year, when we set the budget for this year, we looked at those budget assumptions, like how many administrators were necessary. And we talked about the fact that we didn't rehire an assistant SAU director specialized. We didn't replace the director, building-level director of specialized. We got rid of a specialized, I think, receptionist or assistant. And the responsibilities of 35 staff members that Gigi was in charge of evaluating, which is something the board has expressed is very important to us, the evaluation and supervision piece, that we've just really started to pull together in the past couple of years. For all those reasons, last year, we budgeted for a Dean of Faculty. So, Gigi leaving doesn't change that. But neck, going forward next year, that's certainly something we can look at.
I would submit that it does change things to one extent. And that is, when the position's open and you haven't hired, so if we go and hire somebody to replace Gigi right now, right, we've locked that in for the next, I don't know how many years. Whereas if we look at it now, when it's open, that's another story. We can just, we can maybe understand. And Rob says he's done all this thinking. I just want to hear what he's thought, that's all.
That's exactly why I asked if they're going to advertise it as a permanent position or an interim position, because he was talking about looking at retired people coming back, you know, temporarily. So, I think, to me, the responsibilities are still there. And that, to me, is the biggest thing.
Well, and he had, he said there were ways of maybe reorganizing it. So, I'm just, I'm just throwing out what he said. I'm not arguing with you.
Well, I mean, I-
He's suggesting that there's, once you, once you've hired the person to put the person in place, it becomes very difficult to change it, that's for the following year. And that's all I'm saying. So, if we can look at it now, it makes some sense to me. And I don't know if anybody else agrees with me, but I just think it's one way of looking at the problem.
I was going to ask, I wasn't part of the conversations last year when the budget was in place, but that was going to be my question. Was there any thought given to trying it without replacing it right now? I know it's in the budget, but that, that had always been part of the discussion anyway. Can we reduce the number of administrators? Was there any thought of going forward and even trying it for a few months without replacing it before hiring somebody?
Well, what changes would need to take place if you went forward without considering hiring someone?
Well, I, I wouldn't want to put Rob aside now, but he's, he's thought this thing through. I'd like to-
Right. Well, I'm going to make a couple corrections. We have for the last few years, and kind of to Peter's point, administration, so first of all, everywhere. But when you look at administration, the staffing level of administration, is it necessary? The fact that this is in the budget means that we came to that conclusion for the immediate future, the next one to two years, including this year and next, that that, the amount of administration will allow us to recalibrate after, because we've lost a building-level administrator in an area that's extremely volatile and a lot of volume goes through there. So, we lost a building-level administrator. We've assumed onto the existing ones. We've assumed some of the district curriculum work when we didn't rehire there. So, I hope this answers the question. Yes, 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 we looked at very closely, and that's why we budgeted for it again. And then, when Gigi left, pause to consider, we have already done all this thinking. Let's take a second. Are we still good? And yes, we are. And we need to go forward. But to David's point about looking at it and imagining, that's in that, you know, two to five-year, not next year or, quite frankly, just the supervision/observation numbers, adding 10 more to three people?
I mean, the three other administrators?
Yeah.
If I could add too, you know, we, Rob mentioned the whole curriculum and professional development with Nicole gone, we didn't replace that. Now, we add on PACE, and we also have the valuation pieces that we have to do. So, we're always thinking immediate, short-term, long-term as we go forward. And we have explored some ideas already with specialized and with curriculum and other further areas. So, recommendation clearly is that we need someone now. And as we go into the budget for the year after and the year after that, we will have those conversations about the need as well.
Does that make sense? Any other questions on that?
Well, and again, just to finish up with, you know, David's wonder, I think, yes, hearing those, and they usually come in the context of, as Howard said, on the budget. Even though sometimes I, I wish it came in just the context of talking about, you know, teaching and learning. But the budget process allows us to really clarify, hey, maybe two years from now, here's what the structure could look like. Three years from now, here's what the structure can look like. Folding responsibilities, finding efficiencies. So, I, you will, I think, hear, depending on what subcommittee it occurs in, or if it's more formal and by design as a group. But, I do feel like you'll hear some of that thinking around what it could look like.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I just, so, I understand what you're going for, but I also understand the confusion surrounding this because, so, it sounds like you want to hire or to get somebody in the position because you're not ready to spread out any of the current duties, like, that are associated with that position. However, you did say that you were looking at potentially bringing on a, a part-time person. So, you'd have to spread something out, right? Is that, are you talking about for this academic year?
If we, yeah, so this academic year, and that would be, I think, a little result of who would we compromise to get a quality person who could only come in under that, you know, if they're retired, this, you know, you'd have to reduce with the full-time. And then-
In order for them to get their retirement benefits.
Yeah. And then redistribute some. So, that would be our, our primary. But if it ended up being, well, this is a real, this is a really quality person who the buckets that we would need this person to carry, supervision/observation, maybe, you know, helping coordinate the testing or professional development, some of the training, et cetera. And the trade-off is, we assume maybe some more of the administrative and, yeah, that would be our-
So, I would assume at that point then, to Dave's point, there would be some additional discussion. And, and I think where Dave was going is, it'd be good for, you know, I know the board's typically not involved at that level, but maybe from a informational point of view to be included in that, not necessarily as a decision-making role, but as an informational, in an informational role, to be able to kind of get an understanding of the direction that you want to go in. So, then, as we start to develop budgets in the future, be it this October or the following October, we can understand, you know, how the administration and needs to kind of flatten out in a way, right, and redistribute to get everything done. Because obviously, you guys have a lot of initiatives, which is great, but, you know, those things.
Yeah, and I'd see it almost incidentally, unexpectedly, maybe forcing our hand to limit a little bit some of the ideas that we're, or the wonders that we have about the amount of work that needs to get done, how many people do we need to, to do it, and how the landscape might change a little bit to support it. Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, just to clarify too, what I meant was that we are not typically in charge of hiring and, and letting go of staff, including administrators. But we've always been involved in conversations with budget assumptions, you know, we've always with the Budget Study Committee talked about, that was one of the main things we talked about during the Budget Study Committee. Not just that, but all personnel, including administrators. And we talked about it as a board-
Now, there's a board, you-
Yeah, we talked about it as a board last year during the budget season, if you remember. So, it's always something that we're part of the conversation. And it's been a long summer. We're always part of the conversation, but we also count on recommendations because we're not here doing the day-to-day evaluations or professional development or work that they're doing. So, that's all I meant. But I think during budget assumptions, like I said earlier, it would be a good conversation to have for next year's budget. And when you and probably Adam come back with budget assumptions in October, maybe you can share some of the ideas you have going forward and the timeframe of those ideas. Because I heard you say two to five years, Rob. So, maybe that's where we can get some context with the thoughts, the administrative thoughts-
Yep.
With budget assumptions. So, Adam, you know, would be a part of that too. And Adam is a part, will be a part of the Budget Study Committee also.
And could I just say too, that one of the reasons, we didn't just hire anyone, we wanted to bring it to you guys first to let you know where we were in, in our thinking. So, that was for tonight too, so.
And, it's the last day. We talked in June about just kind of an update on graduation rate. So, just kind of for information of graduation rate, 26 to 27 came 98%. A detailed review of last year's rates supplied at the meeting. I apologize, names are on this. I didn't ask for names to be on this, so I can send this out. And basically, all I wanted to do is, and I think Pete and I talked about this a little bit, what we do from year to year, we have to report our numbers at a certain time in the DOE. We often show up on the DOE maybe 94%, 96% somewhere around that. And then, we just track our students a little bit longer. So, for example, over the last three years, we have, for example, 190, 201 students, 196 walk at graduation. Around that time, we have to report our numbers. It shows up as 94, 95, whatever the percent is. And then, we track those other, you know, five students. In this particular year, three students just finished up in summer school, which sometimes happens. Another student was a by-design, fifth year, and so they'll finish up the year after. And then, one student in that case has not graduated. So, that's where you end up at that 98% or 99%. So, I'd be happy to make that a regular update, but I just wanted folks to know that that's how we track. So, there, the DOE, there's a little slack in the system. The DOE numbers have to go at a certain time, they'll have theirs. And then, we just track our kids. And it's about a year. Like, if you go into the DOE, I think you'll see 2015 or even 14 for some of the latest numbers. And then, they give you kind of a spring too. Because we will have from any year, three to five students who need additional time, and then possibly a HISA or a DODGED or another program which, which counts toward our graduation rate. And then, every other year, possibly, somebody who's considered a dropout or-
Does DOE accommodate the fact that you can go back and say, these certain people didn't graduate this year, but they did graduate the following year?
That's what we-
And change those numbers?
No, we'll do that for you. So, the DOE, if you sign 96, and then we keep that internally and track those students. Unless I'm mistaken, I don't think there's an update where you go back and-
Because it would be misleading if I was to look on the DOE site and say that the grad rate was 98%. And then, I knew that those other 2% graduated the following year, you know, we should be, we should get accounted for that.
Yeah, and, you know, I feel that part of it is, if internally, we have an understanding and know we're taking care of our kids, that should be, you know, the priority. And then, there's, you know, unless I'm, you know, Peter might know, you know, differently. But, I think, you know, there's so much data from so many places, they have some deadlines. And then, you know, the principals I talked to say, they often do this as well, say, you know, what happened to those other three? Oh, well, one was a dropout, but Jimmy and Tommy needed a, Tommy needed a fifth year and Jimmy finished up in summer school. But not re-report, and then they update the numbers. I'm not familiar with that, no.
Dave?
In 2009, the federal government issued a different methodology for computing graduation. It's called the cohort.
Yeah, Keith, we actually just talked about that.
Yeah. So, and the reason why the feds did it was because, obviously, different school districts in different states were reporting it differently. They could make no sense out of it. So, they stated, they gave this formula. It's a very, pretty comprehensive formula that counts for, you know, graduated this summer and this and that, you know. It's a home student, home study, that kind of thing. And, are you, you're not reporting that?
You know, and what Howard said-
You're not reporting that because I was-
Yeah, because Maren will do the next spring, the following spring. She will report those.
But that should be what's, I mean, that's what the feds-
And then, that should show up. Yeah, let me look into, let me look into-
This is what the feds are reporting all the time.
Yeah, let me look into, because 2009, they did do that and they changed the terminology. Let me look into if, you know, the re-
But I, I know the numbers, I got the number right here. Last year was, 2014, 15.
Yeah.
It was 94.92. And if you look at the average, it was 93%-
Yeah.
Over the last six, seven years, since, since they changed to this cohort model.
So, what I'll have to look into is if they recalibrate, because what I have here, unfortunately with names, is those other students-
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to let names-
Yeah, no, but what I'm saying is those other students and who finished, because that year, we had only one student- Because that year, we had only one student who didn't graduate and another who joined drop cohort.
I don't think they go back and recalibrate. It's almost like the October one numbers for tenants are the October one numbers. And the recalibration, it's what you have at that time when they do their report is it.
Right, I agree. But they, Peter, it's done two ways. On the state website, there's the standard one that we've been using apparently. And there's this cohort one that started in two thousand nine. And we've never reported it according to cohort, although that's what the federal government's looking for. And the numbers are way off. The numbers are, you know, we're, you know, four or five percent difference than the cohort one.
Let's go back and look at that, Rob, if we can.
Get an update.
We'll put it on the next agenda, please.
Yeah, I wrote it down already, yeah.
Go back with a presentation on that.
Yep, Rob can update us hopefully, or even just in the principal's report next month.
Okay.
Okay. Rob?
Yeah, and I think in the interest of time, I did do one last thing. But I'm interested in possibly having a, in the next couple of months, having the students come and speak on their own behalf. The CLAW was invited, our student newspaper, was invited this summer by Franklin Pierce College to a new group, be part of a new group, Granite State Student Voice, I think it's called, out of the Marlin Fitzwater School of Communications. They, Franklin Pierce is trying to encourage and support student voice, especially around, you know, the election time. And so students from the CLAW were invited to spend a week at essentially a media camp. They interviewed Marlin Fitzwater, some of you might recognize that name. They got training, they networked, they made connections. So some of our students will be, you know, maybe doing some internships at WMUR. I think there was a young lady named Eastland who enjoyed a little bit of time on the radio with a group out of Boston. So just a really, really rich experience. They're part of, there's a project they have, a challenge that they have. And the group that shows the best will be invited to the inauguration this year. And so that's Adam Taylor, it's class slash group. And as I said, I'm going to save us all by going in more detail. And when I think about it, maybe we could have them come in the next couple of months and do a little presentation. Because as a class and as an experience, it's really taken off.
I like the idea. We have ethics forum come sometimes and some, you know, sports teams. We like seeing the students here. Are you all set, Rob?
Yes.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions for Rob? No?
I guess, I just have one related. Do we have numbers yet with the school population's going to be this year?
We have that down for next month, just because it's still not finalized.
Yeah, that's right, I didn't know.
Yeah, we talked about that.
I didn't know when they were...
But it's looking pretty good again, more than expected, so...
Steady, yep.
Yeah. But yeah, I do have that down for next month, so. All right, anything else? All right, so we have a couple of board members who are actually still on vacation, trying to get everything they can out of summer, so. And one of their daughters is our community council representative. Not much has gone on with community council over the summer. So we're not going to have a community council report. That brings us to committee reports. And I suggested to Peter that we move first the field update. And if we could, Rob mentioned how thankful we are to the Amherst Community Foundation, and specifically, or also, the Calvetti family. If you haven't seen the articles in the newspaper, Facebook, Amherst Today. We've gotten some very generous donations and we have a brand-new field out back. And so I think that part of the Amherst Community Foundation and the Calvetti family are here to give us an update. And you can, Rob, steal Rob's microphone and come right up here, or wherever you're comfortable. But do take a microphone, so everybody can hear you.
Thank you for your patience as well.
Do you want to share?
Yeah. All right, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Gordon Leedy.
Gordon Leedy, oh, Dwayne. Okay.
That's right.
Dwayne's husband, isn't that funny, your husband? My husband is Mary Lee's husband.
See, I knew it meant Sam's dad.
That's right.
Oh, yeah, that's right, either or.
That's right, Sam's dad.
Whenever you're ready, if you want to introduce yourselves, and then whenever you're ready.
So I'm Lisa Cavaney. I'm on the Amherst Community Foundation Board. So we're here tonight just to give an update about the turf and sort of talk about, I'll say, phase two or the beautification of the entrance to the turf.
I'm Angela Horner. And I'm also part of the Amherst Community Foundation and the Calvetti family, so.
We just want to make sure you're close enough to a microphone, because I'm sure people at home want to...
It doesn't pick up with the recording, that's all I can...
Even if you want to hold it, that may...
Actually, this is better.
Thank you.
So really, I mean, if you want to give the update about the turf, and then we wanted to talk a little bit about the enhancement of the entrance and get your feedback really on what our hopes are for that part of the project.
I was just out at the turf today. It looks, they thought they'd be done tonight, so, yeah, so full steam ahead. And it came out beautiful and the arch is up and all hidden. It'll be unveiled on the ninth, a week from tomorrow. So, yeah, it looks beautiful. And the dedication's coming along really well. It's been a few early morning meetings with your crowd here and some members of the Amherst Community Foundation. And it's become a real community effort, which is really nice. The Amherst PTAs moved their ice cream social, so we're going to have a lot of kids and a lot of activity and...
Six o'clock on the ninth, is that correct?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty's the actual dedication.
Right. So the agenda goes at four o'clock, soccer. Four-thirty to six-thirty is the PTA ice cream social, which Angela said, which is great because we really wanted this to feel community-oriented and have all the kids of all ages come and run on the field with their chosen shirt that they would like to wear, sports, cheerleading, whatever it is for them.
Ice cream savers.
Yeah. And then Montverden actually heard about it. And so they're also coming and handing out water. Mr. Allwarden will be singing and playing, so there'll be live music. So we're really excited about it. So we're asking and passing it on to be posted. And so six-thirty starts the dedication, which kind of finalizes the ice cream. And then I know football players will be right on our trail to get out there and warm up for the game. So that's the agenda, and, you know, I think there'll be a good crowd.
Sounds like it, yeah.
So, having said that, that dedication plan, we knew that the bricks that had been for sale all along with this and the other major donors that have given would be getting recognition. And the initial idea was to have those against the wall, the outside wall of the restrooms. And when we took a look at this, as they were putting the field together, there was a whole bunch of us there kind of saying, that's nice, but we could do better than that. And so, from the community foundation's perspective, we did and still have set aside the money to just do that. If we were going to put it on the sidewall with some larger plaques for, you know, families and people that have given more. But we started looking at it. We, of course, got Gordon involved and said, we want this to look nicer, and we think we can do that. So we're here tonight to go over what that is and what our hopes are and the plan for that, what it becomes, is really a sliding scale of the money that we raise. And so, we're going to talk about that and kind of go from there. And this would be done in spring. So this is, you know, we will recognize who's given so far next Friday night. But the fundraising would continue with this sort of outside area to be completed in spring.
Has that been advertised, that you're continuing to sell the bricks and the plaques so that people know they can still buy them?
We did advertise for this Friday night. There's been a lot of discussion at our board, given some of the other fundraising efforts in the community with bricks. We were strategic to not really force that issue. They were finishing the playground project, which a lot of people were buying bricks for. So we knew that we had the money for the turf set and done. And so we really kind of said, you know what, let's leave that. We know that project's complete. And this really came sort of as an afterfact when we were all standing there saying that, wouldn't it be nice if? And wouldn't it be nice if? And I do think it's an opportunity for people because we didn't do a huge, broad advertising for brick sales. We really didn't. People did give, but I've heard from a number of people just anecdotally that said, oh, I wanted to buy a brick, shoot. So, you know, it is still open, we still can do that. And, you know, I think that with this, it really gives sort of grounding to what they're giving to.
Or other larger donations.
Or other larger donations as well. So my background is fundraising. So yes, I think that there are other donations out there that have not been approached. Because, good and bad, it was successful through the donations that were given, were so sizable. So there wasn't a huge market push for, you know, I'll say, the fifteen, ten thousand below people and below to give and contribute, whether it's a brick or more than a brick. So, that's it.
My name's Gordon Leedy, and I am a, not a native, but I've been in town for twenty years and have put three good students through St.vegan. So this place is special for me. I'm a landscape architect, and I've been, I'm on the Land Trust Board. I've been working with them on Joshua's Park, and that's kind of how I got sucked into this. So, and it's interesting because there's, the school actually has really great bones. I mean, but it's also, that particular piece of landscape has been here since the school was built, I mean, before the annex. So that's going on thirty years now. So there are several elements to it that are a little bit tired. And there are some things that are kind of lending them, lending to the tiredness in terms of circulation patterns that force people to do things that maybe they shouldn't be doing. And we all know that kids go wherever they want to go in terms of walking around. So this is... This is a, kind of a piecemeal. We couldn't really find good plans. But this is the, kind of the original site plan from when the annex was built. So it's relatively accurate. And then I pasted that on top of an aerial, just to sort of lend some definition to it. And, you know, really, the bottom line is that when this was all built, it contemplated people coming pretty much exclusively from the high school building to the field. And didn't recognize that this is also part of a larger community facility that really, you know, hosts a number, and hosts a number of things. And people come from basically the parking lot to this place. There's no real good way to get there. There's a, there's a four-foot path here. And there's a three-and-a-half-foot path over here. And so, and people aren't going to walk there. So what happens is people just sort of cut through. And the reason this is all bare in here is because people walk through there. I mean, there's no way you can keep any kind of landscaping materials alive in that situation. So I, one of the, one of the key components to this is to create kind of a more gracious entry to, you know, we would need to lose two to three parking spaces, but in the grand scheme of things, I think that's small potatoes. And I wish that I had known that you would repay the parking lot because I would have suggested this about, you know, two months ago. But in any case, this is just extending the curb out to a couple of parking spaces and building a new walkway that comes into this area. And then this becomes kind of an entry court for the stadium. And it's related to where the people are coming from, as well as from the school. The arch is in this location. And what I'm suggesting here is that we saw cut out this concrete pavement that is here and kind of reorient it so that it comes straight in. And what that does is, right now, it's kind of, it, there's an angle point right about where the, where the arch is. What that does is, it allows you to pull that pavement away from the end of the bleachers and create an area for some planting. The old pine that was here was removed as a part of the construction. So what I'm suggesting is that we have the archway, we have kind of a colonnade of arborvitae that would provide a portal that reinforces the arch motif and, you know, creates a, creates an entry to the, to the, to the field area. Then this really becomes a new, a new plaza area that is not simply the entrance to the, to the bathrooms and to the concessions, but really is a gathering space within which we can saw cut some of that pavement, put the bricks in there. I'm suggesting that we get rid of the chain, the lovely chain link fence that's there and just sort of open it up to the lower field area over here. Plant a few trees that could be dedication trees, you know, with boulders and plaques and, you know, however we want to deal with that. And then highlight the arch with some LED uplights that would, again, since many of the activities take place here at night, it would be a kind of more dramatic approach to the stadium. The other real key thing here is that, not exactly, it seemed like a good idea at the time, I'm sure. But the light poles are kind of out in the middle of everything. And they are really tired. They're, they've reached, I would say, the, close, they're close to the end of their useful life. So it would be, it would behoove us, I think, to relocate those light fixtures to the exterior of the, of the plaza area. You'd still have a well-lit, safe environment. But you could, you know, have more appropriate, more appropriate light fixtures that, you know, could be modern LED fixtures with lower energy costs, lower, lower maintenance costs. So I'm suggesting, right now, there's a light fixture kind of in the middle here. There's another one over here that's kind of on a, they're on these concrete boxes that don't make any sense to me. But in any case, take those existing light fixtures, replace them in somewhat different locations. There's another light fixture right in the middle of this patio space. Take that, move it over by the building. There's an existing light fixture here that could stay. And this may be actually a new light fixture. So a big, unfortunately, there are costs associated with that. So that's something that, you know, I think we should do. But the, the quality and the kind of fixtures I think would be highly dependent on the amount of money that's available to do, to do the work. I passed out a preliminary budget that is around fifty thousand dollars for this work. That's a rough estimate. I think it may, in many, it may be high, frankly. But it's going to cost something like that. So this plan is highly, highly dependent on how much money we can raise. And if we need to get rid of some trees or we need to downsize the trees from what I've shown in my cost estimate, we can certainly do that, and we can trim costs significantly. The irrigation system comes to mind as something that would be nice to have but may not be necessary to have. You know, it would certainly lead to better, you know, thriving landscape materials. But, you know, it's also eight grand, so, you know. So we can work through this. But the notion of improving this area, kind of reducing the chain link elements and creating additional areas for landscaping, I think would really give us a, an entry and an experience here that we can all be proud of. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Dave?
The one, the one comment I would make is that that chain link fence, I'm not opposed to taking away, but it was, I think, structurally there from the beginning because of the shot put pit and the discus pit. And randomness of people walking through there and getting clobbered by a discus, you know.
Yeah, I guess my, my comment there is that, you know, how many times have you actually seen somebody throw a discus there? And I think they're actually throwing them the other way. So, you know, there's a, there's this, which is the, it's the surround, which would... So, you know, there's a, there's this, which is the, it's the surround, which would stay.
Right.
And then the throw area is off in this direction.
Correct.
So, you know, the, the reason, I think the reason that the fence is there, and would need to probably be replaced in part back here, is to keep people out of sneaking into paid events, which there are, you know, more than a few of per year. So, I get that, but I would rather, and, you know, the chain link fences, as chain link fences go, it's a pretty good one, you know, at least it's vinyl coated and it's, you know, green and, and, you know, it's, it's.
Is it galvanized?
No, it's vinyl coated, they're, it's a, it's a green, a green vinyl coated, and it's in pretty good shape. And I'm not suggesting that the fence along here be relocated, but that we pull the pavement back from it so that we can get some landscaping in front of it. I just didn't see any reason to have a fence there. It's sort of, you know, plaza in bondage, I kind of.
Does anybody else have other questions? Tim?
So, your cost estimate, even if you take some of it out, you know, downsize it a little bit, is the, let me ask, what's the, the objective for getting enough money? So, is it, is it through fun, additional fundraising?
Right. Yep. So, we have around five to ten thousand set aside for the dedication, whatever that would be, which was in the, our original plan of the totality of the project to date. From that, it would be, from that point, how much can be raised to fulfill these goals? And I think it then comes down to sort of priority, right? So, the dedication, we know, needs to be there. You know, there's many ways to do that. The pavement and in the ground seemed very inviting and attractive to a lot of people versus the wall. The cost difference for that is within what we would be doing, and so beyond that is sort of then what becomes priority thereafter. Is it the entrance? Is it the, the trees and the shrubs? And, you know, so depending on that, and I think you called lighting a wormhole to me at one point. So, lighting, I think, you know, becomes a big sway factor in cost. And so, where we're at, I'm saying by the end of this year, December, I think, would then factor into that final discussion of, here's what it is, here's what we have to offer to the school, you know, let's collectively decide and, and have your feedback as to how you would want that ultimately to show.
Well, and, and the other question, frankly, is whether the school has any skin in that game, and if you're planning on replacing any of those light fixtures at some point, which probably should, is there an opportunity to at least, you know, sort of get on that, get on that wagon? The, and by, by talking about lighting as a wormhole, it's like you can spend, it's, it's like redoing a kitchen, right? I mean, you can, you can, you can find sinks for twenty bucks and you can find sinks for three thousand dollars, so it's the same with light fixtures, you can, I've got twenty-five hundred dollars a fixture in this budget, I'm pretty sure you can get a pretty good pedestrian scale light fixture for that with a pole and a base, but obviously you can spend a lot more, too.
Sure.
But, you know, the, it, it's like anything else, the, 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 the exterior features of this school are as old as the school is, so just like you have to redo roofs and all of that, you know, it's, it's a capital, capital investment.
Well, just so you know, there was no plan to replace light fixtures. As a matter of fact, as a matter of fact, we stayed away from it when we did, we had, redid our track, and we asked the voters or taxpayers for money to redo our track. One of the, you know, money savers was not expanding the track, so we had to move or replace lighting and fencing and all of that to save some money, but.
Well, when you're talking about field lighting, that's a whole different thing. I mean, that, those are fifty thousand apiece.
Oh, are they? I didn't even know that, but I knew we saved quite a bit of money by not replacing them.
It's big one.
And there was ideas, whether it be pole, even lighting that comes off a building, I mean, there's so many variations.
Yeah.
The one, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we were to put the dedication plaques where we could sort of have them, there's definitely one light in those, I'll say, nine squares that would be taken up to put the bricks in.
Okay.
So, that would have to be, at least in, in that discussion, there's definitely one. There's others that would make it much nicer looking, but wouldn't necessarily have to go if, if it came down to it.
And we could get a, this is simply my take on, on what is, what's desirable. I mean, we may, as we get into it and we understand a little bit more about what kind of budget is available, and we need to, you know, scale it back, you may be able to do with three fixtures what I'm saying you need five for. You know, it's a matter of getting a manufacturer involved and doing some photometrics and really understanding what the light levels, you know, are from whatever fixture we select. So, and as Lisa mentioned, you know, you can do things with downcast wall packs and, you know, that kind of thing, too, that would, would save a significant amount of money.
Dave?
Sorry, Lou, I, I think, let me put words in your mouth.
Okay.
I think what they're coming, because I've been part of this, too, I think what they're coming to us for is sort of permission to go forward with this, and the intention was that it, that it be raised with all private money as a tradition, and this whole field project has been all private money, and we haven't asked the, the school district or taxpayer to pay anything. And I think they're asking for us to say yes to proceeding with it, you know, without taxpayer dollars, and that they can continue to investigate it and raise money for the specific purpose of doing the fifty thousand or whatever. And depending upon what they get, they'll scale it back.
Right.
So.
Well, well stated.
So, can I make a motion?
Well, I, I, before you do that, I do have one request. It's okay, no, that is all accurate. For next Friday, in your motion and decision, I would like, from a marketing advertising perspective, to say, this would be our dream, please help us with this dream and have this available for people to see, because people give to what they see. As far as logistically, what light gets moved where and what shrub gets planted is really yet for discussion, and, but I would like permission to be able to say, you know, this is, yeah, this is our hope, would you still be a part of it, leave your legacy, buy a brick, contribute, and so that's in my request tonight.
Sure. I just was asking whether we really needed to officially vote on this, but, you know, as the superintendent said, it's always nice to have a vote on record, but I like your idea of collaborating with the school based on, and what, what I think, what I would like is to ask if you would come back in December. You said that you want to target December for a date of knowing how much money you have and then moving forward. I like the idea, and we can vote on it, but I like the idea of advertising that on, at the dedication ceremony, and, and then coming back in December, letting us know where you are to date financially, and then where you want to go forward with. The only thing, other thing I would ask is that maybe meet with, like, Rob and Dick Miller, or, and I don't know if you already have met with Dick.
Which one?
Yep, we did, and John.
I knew, well, I knew you had met with John, but I didn't know if you had met with Dick Miller, because.
He's been at our meetings.
Oh, Dick has, okay.
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay, great, because I was just thinking, and you're talking about the fence and all of that, that they might have some input as to why it should, you know, remove, be removed or not be removed, so.
Right.
So, but if you already have, then great. So, I know Dave was going to make a motion.
I, I had a question first, though.
Okay. We can still discuss after, too, but, yeah.
During this whole discussion, was camera coverage back in that area ever discussed? If they're going to be moving lights?
I mean, it certainly could be a part of it, if that's what, if that's what your desire is. I mean, the, the wiring for the lights would need to be moved, presumably. I don't, you may know how it's wired, you may not, but, you know, you, we're going to need to put in, put in conduit or whatever, and if you're running conduit, you can, you know, put a cap, you know, put coax in and do, do video. Do you have a security?
Yeah, there's, you know, we have the concession stands, we also have the, the rust rooms back there, if anything else happens back there on that, if anybody wanted to go back there and damage the stuff that you guys have already accomplished.
Right, right.
I would be for security in that.
Right.
I'm not sure what our cam, camera coverage, coverage back there, do you know, Rob?
The closest one, excuse me, side of the, John, one of the recent new ones on the annex.
It's all over the parking lots.
Yeah. Doesn't get that far.
There's additional recently run wire to that point.
Right.
So, yeah.
Well, that, that also speaks to wanting to have reasonable lighting as well.
I know we have that on our agenda for tonight, the cameras for inside and outside, but we can discuss that later.
Yeah, it's actually not on tonight, it's on October, I believe, I don't think the cameras are on for tonight. Yeah. Yep, that's on October's, that just came up this week, so that's not on this agenda. Any other questions? Okay, Dave, you were going to make a motion?
I'm just remembering.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I moved that the board approved proceeding with the planning process to upgrade, I'll, I'll break this up for you, man. To upgrade the, the entryway.
Calling it a gateway. That's going to be my marketing.
I like that, nice.
Pending, pending two things, the completion of the fundraising in the, in the spirit of a non-taxpayer funded event, activity, and the completion of the plans, detail plans. All right?
And I don't think we have to do anything as far as Lisa's request to, when you were planning on putting out a table or something.
Yes, I just, I guess because it was different than what you understood initially to be what we were proposing, I wouldn't want to put it out in the public and have you say, wait a minute, I didn't know, I didn't know we were moving them to the ground, or, you know, just to be able to get your permission to say, I'm aware of it, and if someone asks it, yes, there is this thing and a second sort of phase going forward that we support and want to have happen.
Yeah, and I think this vote will take care of that, too, the support part of it, so we do appreciate that.
Yep.
Tim?
I'll second.
Okay, Tim seconds. So, any further discussion before voting? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous? Dave, I assume you're in favor, obviously.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Oh, okay. All right, great, thank you, guys, again, so much.
If one of your engineering classes might want to do a measured drawing of this area, would be excellent.
It would be great.
Somehow get your contact info.
Okay, yeah.
Great.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay, all right, so we will move on with other committee reports. I'll, I'll go first only because P P C met yesterday, and it was really just a kickoff where we kind of established norms for negotiations going forward, because as you guys know, it's a negotiating year, so, but nothing other than that to report. Any other committees that would like to report out? Howard?
Policy Committee met on the sixteenth, we elected the new chair, that was Gaglin Trembley, and I volunteered to do the minutes. We discussed the status of using the AMR to, you know, talk about the policies on, online. We changed our mind on that after talking to the attorneys and decided it wasn't a good idea to discuss policy on that. So, we're going to do it a different way. Superintendent will bring the policies to us at the meeting, we'll discuss them at the meeting and bring them to our boards, as we have in the past. We talked briefly about the transgender and gender non-conforming policy, which will be coming up real soon.
You're going to have a policy for us, you mean, soon?
Yes.
Okay.
At the September twenty-second meeting.
Oh, so your meeting, okay.
But, what we talked about, too, was to enjoin the community council at South Egan High School in that conversation, so that'll be happening as well.
At a community council meeting or at the S A U meeting? Okay, community council.
Both.
Okay. All right.
We also had, like, a public forum as well, I think we talked about, too.
Perfect. Any other committees?
The only thing I participated in over the summer as part of the committee is looking into the grading system.
Yeah.
So, we had a discussion on a couple of books that were assigned, and the, the one thing that jumped out at me is that, you know, it had been a while since I was in a committee, it was, you know, me and like four or five other teachers, and it was just great to hear, like, the, the passion that they all had, and the feeling that everybody had about just wanting to make sure that, you know, it, it wasn't even like which grading system we use was important, but it's, you know, what's going to be best for the kids, so, you know, it was just the initial discussions in terms of what to do about the grading system, because we reviewed, we read a book that, you know, is basically challenging everything, wants to do away with all things, but, you know, people saw good points in it, and, you know, we had the discussion, so, but, like I said, what really jumped out is that they're looking for whichever way we go, consistency all the way through, using the same terminology in terms of grading, so.
Yeah.
You know, we just kicked off that, that was just the beginnings of it, so.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, but it was very interesting.
Yeah, keep us updated, because that was part of, I know the committee I was on, I think Unite, I think was the pillar I was on anyways, that was part of what we said is consistent terminology in grading, so that's good to hear that it's kicked off. And, yep, and I know the pillars you're going to pick up, yep. If there was no other committee reports, the, when Dave emailed me, I said that we talk under committees about assigning pillars. Now, Dwayne's not here, so he can, you know, speak for himself next time, but you and Dwayne were not assigned to a pillar? Okay, so, and, so I guess, let me know what it was you guys wanted to discuss about that, or what you want to.
You want to volunteer for one, Peter? I mean, that's another way to look at it.
Peter has been kind of coordinating that, I don't know, Peter, if you know where there's a need, or, or.
That might be a discussion for the September twenty-second S A U meeting, if we're going to assign.
More people to pillars, yeah. That's true, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, well, and we have, the anomaly is here, because we have seven board members, so the other boards have five, so it mathematically works that each one is on a pillar committee. Here, we have two extra, and I think Dwayne and Peter came in, weren't assigned one. So, I think if it's okay, I would like to have that conversation at the September twenty-second meeting for a couple of reasons, I could probably answer this in one of two ways, but, so very quickly, in the next week or so, I'm going to ask the chairs to give me an update of where we are with each pillar, like I did previously last spring. We'll have that information, we'll be talking, the Streamline Committee will be talking about consolidation at the twenty-second meeting, and we can see where the needs are in those committees, and go from there. I think that would, you know, not to say that you couldn't get what you might want to add to, but I think hearing the whole conversation might help to put those two people, if they're interested in a committee, that might help us all, so, does that make sense? That's what I'm thinking about right now.
Do you agree with that? Or, I mean, does that make sense to you? Is that right?
My only thing is, is that as a chairman, I don't want to move forward on this, I want to keep getting my committee moving forward, and waiting to the twenty-second is, it just puts things off.
The one that I wanted to be on from day one, you know, four years ago, was that one, but, you know, that wasn't assigned, yeah, that wasn't assigned the first time.
You're welcome.
But if we're going, if we're going to wait, then I don't even know if it pays to get assigned to a committee if I only have a one-year term, so.
So, that's the point.
You know, I'm not going to have too much time to contribute anyway, so.
I'm okay if the board's okay, you know, you wouldn't want to have two other people on the advanced committee, right? You wouldn't want to have all, you wouldn't want to have Dwight, Dwayne, you know, you wouldn't want to have all those.
I think Dwayne would like to, I don't know about Peter.
Would like to what?
Be on advance.
Well, Peter said he would like to.
I'm already on it, and you're on it, so.
There are four board members on a seven-on-one committee.
And so that's another reason, going back to that conversation on the twenty-second about who should be on which pillar, and so, and we also have a large number of staff that is on the, the advanced committee.
From South Egan, you mean?
From our S A, so we have Christine, Christine, we have Christine, we have Bethany, we have Ruchak, and we have Porta Dodge. Who else am I missing? that is on the advance committee.
From Sauhegan, you mean?
From our S A, so we have Christine, Christine, we have Christine, we have Bethany, we have Brusak, and we have Porta Dodge. Who else am I missing?
Pete.
And Pete. Hi, Pete. So, quite a good group, so.
Empire.
Okay, that makes sense to me, because I think four, four out of seven of our board members being on one pillar kind of doesn't make sense, especially when we have administrators from Sauhegan, and I think there's some teachers, too, I thought we had from...
We have Amy McGraydon. We have another, another community member as well, I think, or a community member, right?
Yes.
So, it's a large group.
Chris Jansen, who's a former S A, Sauhegan board member.
No.
Oh, she's on advance with you guys.
She's on Streamline.
Oh, Streamline, okay. I thought she was on advance with you guys. Okay. All right, so that, does that make sense then, Pete? And then also, Dwayne will be there hopefully, too, so that you guys can decide, you know, what you guys want to be on, because it sounds like Dwayne also wants to be on. Okay.
And Kim Robersh is on that from Montburnett.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, all right, we'll, we will discuss that at the September twenty-second S A U meeting.
Thank you.
The only other thing under committees is, and I mentioned this to Peter and Rob, because I've been wanting to, and with Betty gone, I think maybe I'll spearhead organizing it, but I would like the Budget Study Committee to meet. With negotiations coming up, I want to review what our Budget Study Committee recommendations were, specific to negotiations, but even in general going forward with budget assumptions. So, I would, I'll send an email out, again, because I think Betty used to do that, or sometimes Mary Ann, but...
Mary Ann did.
Or maybe Pam could, but maybe in a couple of weeks, or a week or two, we could at least get together and meet, and I'll pull together some minutes and notes from that, so you guys, you know, or maybe I'll email you the minutes. I was emailing board members the minutes anyway from our meetings, but you probably, you know, don't have them still. I'll pull the pertinent ones, maybe with the recommendations, and copy and paste some things together in the meantime for you guys, and then we'll schedule a Budget Study Committee meeting, because I think it's you and, you and Pete, right? You guys are the two other board members on the Budget Study Committee.
I think that's what Peter didn't want because of the one-year commitment.
Yeah, that was the one I originally, but I thought Dwayne wound up taking that. I don't remember.
I think Dwayne did.
Okay. All right, I'll look back on the notes.
Because that was the one that we had both expressed interest in.
Yep, you and Dwayne, yeah.
I think I deferred to him since he had the three-year term.
Okay.
We have that information.
Yeah, we've got the committee assignments. I'll just, I'll just look back and say, or one of us can. Okay. All right, so that brings us to the consent agenda, and does anybody, first of all, have anything they want to poll on the consent agenda?
I have a couple.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I totally skipped over that. So, yes, public comment? I totally missed that. Yep, Maggie, and there's a microphone there.
Hello, it's the beginning of the year. Maggie McCabe, Amherst, New Hampshire. Anyway, I brought this up, and I don't believe it was at this meeting. I think it was at the A S D, but I want to bring it up here. And it's on the placement of where public comment is in the agenda. Tell me if I brought it up with you guys.
No.
No, I think it was A S D. So, what happens is, we sit here during the meeting, and there might be something that will come up that we want to comment on during the meeting, and we're at the beginning of the meeting. So, I would like to see either two times where we could comment at the end of the meeting, so we don't have to hold something over for a month to bring it to your attention, or move it to the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Now, I mean, there's pros and cons with that, because the public will leave, but you don't get that many anyway, so I'm just...
Yeah, and, and if you put it at the end, you have to sit all the way to the end of the meeting, but sometimes...
I do, I do.
Well, you do, you do, but some other...
No, and I understand that, but maybe just to open up to say if there's any final comments from the public, because otherwise I have to wait. If I want to comment on something that's happened in the meeting, I have to wait another month to say, last month you talked about this, and I'd like to talk about it.
Okay. My only, I like that, I like the idea. The only concern is, is because sometimes our meetings do run late, and I wouldn't want them to run even later. And secondly, I wouldn't want it to be abused, not necessarily by you, but by somebody who wants to pontificate on something, comes at the beginning of the meeting, and then at the end of the meeting again, it just reiterates what they said, because they want to make a strong point.
Remember, you only gave us three minutes.
Yeah, you could use three minutes to make the same point over and over.
I'm saying, it'll be limited, because you limited us to that three-minute rule last year.
Well, yeah, that's kind of a board, all the board's procedures, not ours, but, so, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. It is a board agenda. I mean, I don't know what you guys think about that, just moving it to the end, or having two. Again, one of my concerns is lengthening the meeting, but I'm not opposed to it.
I feel that we should have two, if we're gonna do one at the end. We should have one in the beginning, because there are a lot of people that would just come in and say what they have to say and leave.
Right.
And then, but this way, at least at the end, if you make the comment, is there any other public comment that would, you know, that would serve the purpose?
Any other thoughts? Yeah?
Makes sense to me.
Okay, but that's not something we have to vote on. It's our agenda. We can just add it, so, okay. All right, I'll just put it down as an action item. All right, thanks, Maggie.
Chances are, it's only gonna be a few people at the state today anyway.
Or one. Or one.
So, now, you know, in thinking of all the boards, I'll, I'll bring this forward to that Sauhegan is going to be doing this next month, and see if the other boards are interested as well. I'll do that this month, so, okay? Thanks, Maggie.
Well, let me just ask a question, though. So, then if you do that, let's say something comes up, we vote on it, we pass something, and then somebody wants to comment at the end, does that mean we have to reopen the whole discussion and redo the voting and things?
No, I don't say no.
I don't.
Public comment really is for people to come to the board and have public comment, and for the board to listen and say thank you, and/or give a direction to the superintendent, or, but it's really not a back and forth, it's more just that.
No, I understand that, but we have, we have something in the beginning of a meeting. Everybody knows what the topics are gonna be. You could express your opinions before any vote takes place.
That was my thought originally.
But then, once it's done, I hate to say it, it's done.
Dwayne brought this up.
So, other than, you know, listening to somebody disagreeing with us, you know, it...
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I don't know, is it public time? No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
It is still public time.
For example, on the agenda, it talks about equality or something. And I thought they were gonna talk about the transgender bathrooms issue, because it had just come up in the news about that. It had nothing to do, it had to do equality of girls and boys in signing classes, or something like that. So, when I look at the agenda, I don't have the information you have. I don't know what it's gonna be about.
Fair enough, yeah. Yep, but Dwayne had brought that up, and I had the same concern, but, but again, I'm not opposed to it, so, but yeah, it's not always clear.
No, I'm not saying shut down discussion, but I don't know, like, what's the expected outcome? You know, if you vote on something, is there...
Just to hear our voice.
Yeah.
Just a comment.
Any other discussion on that, or thoughts? Okay. All right, so I have it down as an action item. Any other public wishing? Lisa?
Hi, Lisa Eastland, Amherst, New Hampshire. Sorry, I'm still in summer wear. I'm holding on to the last bits. I wanted to publicly thank Adam Terrio for working the whole situation with the precedent of the presidency. And you know you mentioned kids coming in, but the one thing my daughter said on the way home was, it was one of the first times that she was working with a different group of people, and they were down in it, but tossing ideas, and going back and forth, and looking up links, and emailing it to each other, or texting each other, and she said, we didn't get distracted. We were down in it and really producing something. And she said, I see where all of this is going. So, I thought that was a really, I was like, she's gonna graduate. She is gonna go to college. This is awesome. I mean, of course she is, but still, you know, as a parent, you think, oh, thank God. You know, she sees something beyond the next, you know, nine months. So, that was great. Thank you, Adam. It was awesome. She absolutely loved it, and I think all the kids did. The second thing, and this kind of goes to Maggie's point, I had some information about the, raising the athletic fees, and in talking to, well, and I have a kid at A M S, they raise their fees 50 percent, that their athletic fees and all of their, like, theater club, whatever, used to be 50 bucks, it's now $75 this year. The, what I proposed to raise some revenue was $10, so that's 10 percent or less based on your sport, and still keeping the family cap the same. So, I think the increase is not that much. I talked to Rick Katzenberg, he's got about 85 kids enrolled in the job bank. He said, a lot of them he can't use, because they're too young, they can't go on a job by themselves, they don't have a car. So, if you all decided, yeah, a $10 increase is, seems manageable, if I have a kid playing basketball, I can turn to my kid and say, you know what, by January of 2018, you need to come up with $10. I mean, that's a parent's prerogative to say, hey, your sport is going, now gonna cost us $10 more, you have an entire school year to help raise that. There's the Teen Job Bank. He said, in fact, he's got big jobs that he tries to hand off to groups, and a lot of times he, and sometimes he can't do it, because those are the same kids who are doing everything. You know, it's community council, or student activities, or, you know, whatever. He's got a big group, he needs 10 kids, and he can't get 10 kids to do it, because they're off doing everything else. But for 10 bucks an hour, you know, a team or some kids could find, you know, there's been plenty of people saying, I need weeding done for three hours. So, there's, there's that. So, in balancing if we're gonna raise versus what A M S is gonna raise, it's much less percentage. And then, I was just wanting to comment quickly on what Dave was talking about, the organizational chart, and I was happy to hear Rob say he's talking about a two-to-five-year kind of roadmap with this organizational chart. And my question to the board is, what is yours' mission in helping determine, not just money, but what is the most efficient process for providing the educational service? Where do you all fit into helping? Because I'm sure some of you all have been in businesses that have had reorganization, or been part of, how does, what does this look like? How do we go from here to here? How, is there somebody that is on that committee to provide, you know, just, hey, I've lived through that, I've done that, but particularly, what is your mission as the board? How do you play into that, besides just holding the purse strings?
Well, I don't think this is a question-answer session.
But that's what my, when we're talking about these things, that's, I would think this is some of the discussion the board should be having, of how do we fit into helping create that roadmap of where we're going?
Yeah, well, like I said, we have, get budget assumptions every year that we have input into, and then going forward from October all the way through February, continue to have input, not only board members, but advisory finance committee members.
Right, and I'm suggesting that maybe outside of just the purse strings, that maybe there is a role to play in terms of kind of overarching management.
Yeah, we do have those discussions.
Okay.
Like I said, yep, but thank you, though.
All right.
Thank you. All right, any other public wishing to comment? All right, seeing none. Did anyone have any, anything they wanted to poll from the consent agenda? Howard?
The June second minutes.
Oh, okay. So, any, all right, just before you tell us your changes, Howard, anyone else have anything to poll? No, okay.
I mean, comments on the, on the...
Do you want to poll any of the minutes?
Yeah, I do. There's a couple of things in there that are...
Which, which ones?
Which ones is three, three different?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well...
I'm sure that mine is the one, the one that he was covering up.
Okay, all right, that's what Howard's pulling, too, so...
Okay.
You're not on, on the minutes. You're not listed as one of the members from the board, but you, you were there and you had discussion, yeah.
Was that your correction, too?
Well, I was part of it. There's other things.
Okay, so Howard, why don't you, is that your only correction? Okay.
On June second, add David Chin to the attendees.
All right, David, what are your corrections?
Just a couple of things. On line seventy-seven, one seventy-seven, Ms. Mullins noted that they had, did a stipend review, but did not include coaches. It was not coaches that we're talking about. It was non-coaches as well, stipends for all the other positions. And Dick was gonna go off and look at that.
You mean clubs?
Clubs, yeah, clubs.
Okay, all right, so, all right, I didn't add clubs in.
No, you did. You said it.
Okay.
But it wasn't recorded that way here.
Okay.
Okay, so just add...
Clubs.
And clubs.
We didn't include stipends for coaches, or like mentors for clubs. That was not part of the whole school stipend review, yeah.
Then on line, actually, Lisa, was there, nine, two thirty-six, Ms. Eastland asked if Sauhegan ever did an audit. And as I remember, that was, it was a discussion about efficiency versus accreditation, you know, an efficiency audit. And so, it's just not any old audit. We do audits. I mean, the counts come in all the time, and not all, but once a year, and review the, review the books.
So, have efficiency then?
It's an efficiency audit that she was asking about. And then on line two forty-seven, Mr. Purvis noted that he wanted to speak as a public citizen. I think it was a private citizen. He's already...
Oh, public comment, under public comment, yeah.
Did he speak under public comment?
Yeah, he did.
All right, under public comment, that, that is, he wanted to be a private citizen when he spoke, but he wanted to...
Under public comment. He wasn't speaking as a board member.
So, we can either change it to under public comment, or speak as a private citizen. But I would say, under public comment, he wanted to speak. Did you have more?
Nope, not on that one.
Okay. And I, before we vote to approve the consent agenda with the amendments, I wanted to ask John Robashow and Adam maybe to just speak to, because one of the things that we're doing is we are accepting $5,000 towards the stadium sound system. So, I wanted them to speak to where the rest of the money was going to come from for this before we voted. So, if you guys want to take, take the seat by the microphone. John, do you want to come up, too? We can grab a...
I know, but he's...
Okay.
Support from his fans. Thank you. We're excited to receive that very generous donation from those two, those two folks who are donating, who are closely related. And it's come together somewhat quickly, and so we were unsure as to the final quotes that we would receive for the equipment. And so, we put in a kind of a buffer for us. We've worked today to secure how it's going to turn out, and it's gonna be just about $6,000 total. And so, it'll only be about, just a little bit over $1,000 that we'll need from the budget. And as you can tell from my memo, I was a little bit conservative with you about how much we might need.
Sure.
John has informed me that the budget is in very good shape at this point, partly because we don't have a facilities manager in place at the high school. It saves about $5,000 a month right now, at this point in time, because John accepted a promotion that vacated that position. So, budget-wise, we're in good shape.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions about that? So, the $5,000 donation that we got, and then the thousand from the budget, because I wasn't sure if everybody was copied on that memo. Any questions for Adam on that? No?
I have a question for John.
Yes.
Will be in by the ninth.
No.
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 Would be nice, but hey, we can't complain.
We're likely...
People, community members have been very generous to us. What's that?
We'll have something there for Sam.
It won't be the new, yeah.
John's already secured something for us, that we'll have something there for the dedication.
Yeah, I know, I know. I just put pressure on John's.
Um, okay, so if...
I know, I just...
When we vote for the consent agenda, we'll, you know, this will be included, so we don't need to have a separate vote. So, if there are no other questions, thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
All right, so, does anybody want to make a motion? Oh, Howard, do you have something else, or a motion?
No, I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda with the corrections.
Okay, anyone second? Tim seconds? All right, all in favor? Unanimous? Great. All right, and you got my email that this was mistakenly put on here as far as presentations. We're gonna have that maybe, I think November is when we're gonna actually have that, when we have more competency data and S A T information. So, a lot of the informational, now, this is like the day before Mary Ann was retiring, so a lot of the informational actually was already covered under the principal support, which is the good news. And let us, I guess, the recommendation on the coaches stipend was supposed to come from the athletic liaison committee. Dave, the, the recommendation on the coaches stipend, we left last year with you guys going to talk to Dick Miller and find out, I think you specifically, Dave, we're gonna find out whether these were starting stipends, or whether, when they looked at our comparison to other schools, and we were low on coaches stipends, was he giving you our starting coaches stipends, or is that actually where our coaches are, and you guys were gonna come back with a little...
I transacted it by email, and he said they were, and I forwarded the email to all of you, so...
Oh, okay.
So, the answer for him is yes. Well, I'm probably mixing them up through emails, but the answer was yes, they were beginning salaries, although there are some places that don't really publish your salaries, you know, it's hard for them to find all the data and pull it together.
Okay, so I guess, oh, go ahead, Tim.
I was gonna say, my comment to that, even though we're not necessarily changing anything today...
anything today, you probably saw in the newspapers, Milford changed their coaching stipends, increasing most of them, not all, some of them went down, I think, but.
I actually didn't see that, but yeah.
So it's, it's, it's happening in the area. There's other schools, I don't recall what other schools, but Milford I remember because it was in the cabinet. So it's something that we should seriously look into.
So, go ahead, Dave.
There is something in this room I'd really like to ask a question of. It's not Rob, it's Bill Dodd.
Okay, I'm not.
Because Bill actually set the scale when we first started the school on all the stipends for athletic coaches, Bill, as I remembered. And I remember when we did that, way back in 92, these numbers really haven't changed at all.
They have not changed in a very long time. They've stayed, they've stayed across the board.
Right. So, I mean, I remember the football coaches salary was $3,200 or something like that.
Wow.
And, and it's still $3,200.
Okay, well, so.
So I'm not saying that we should necessarily raise all the salaries, but we should really take a serious look about what we're trying to do with the salaries as they are. And, you know, if, you know, a lot of these coaches are there because they want to be there. If the salary was a buck, they'd probably, you know, I don't know if they do it for that, but there was, there would be, there's a lot of interest in doing it.
You don't do the school board because of the money, do you?
Yeah.
Absolutely, Howard.
So.
That's why I gave my stipend away, that's.
So over the summer, I know you guys were supposed to just talk today about whether, I mean, to Dick about whether they were starting stipends or what, so that we could eventually get to that.
Right, right.
Which is a recommendation next month, which comes in perfect timing. We planned it that way with budget assumptions. It's, it's not going to be a huge part of the budget, but you guys are going to talk to him and maybe Dick could come, you know, Rob, you guys can work together to see if maybe Dick should come or you guys come back and give a recommendation. The other thing is negotiations, and I'm unclear whether, and Bob, maybe you can help out, would that be part of negotiations or just part of budget assumptions?
I would say it's, in my experience, also, but part of negotiations.
Okay. All right, so then maybe what we need is for Dick to make a recommendation to PPC. Does that sound, Dave?
Well, I was going to say something else. We go ahead first, what are you saying?
No, no, that's what I was going to say, is that maybe what we need for an action item is for, ask Dick to make a recommendation to PPC. So, all right, why don't we, Rob, could you, this is kind of out of what we normally do, apparently because we haven't raised them, so we've never dealt with it. Could you work with Dick on that?
Yeah, I'm making a note right now.
Okay.
Because Dick and I have a meeting for next week and I'll put that on as, because I also want to double-check with PPC their understanding and, and, well, for 25 years, it doesn't seem to have been a big part.
Yeah, it hasn't come up, so.
It's like a standing number that.
Okay.
So ownership of it might be a little, we'll trace that a little bit to confirm that it's part of budget, not assumptions.
What is the tie with PPC with coaches stipends?
Well, stipends.
Why would that be?
Well, teachers stipends have, from what I understand, been part of negotiations. So that's why I didn't know if coaches stipends would also be a, a part of that. I mean, they're employees, right, of the district, and so that's, that's my question. I'm not sure whether it's just budget assumptions or part of negotiations.
Doesn't just sound like the extracurricular activities, you know, team sports are a completely different topic. That's why I didn't understand what the tie is.
Well, they're still employees of, of the district, so that's, that's why my.
Are they, are they part of that same bargaining unit?
Is there a contract? I guess that's the point. Is there a contract that this?
Yeah, they have a year-to-year contract.
That's one of the things, I'll explore the ownership, so to speak, Peter, first, and then see if it's more of just a, a line that's, that not PPC negotiated.
Dave, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Bill specifically. In your tenure, which was, what, 17 years from '92, Bill?
Yes.
17 years. Did you raise salaries in that period of time? Do you recall any increases?
To answer your question, we raised them a few years, 4% of what the salary was. So if a person got $3,000, he got, he or she got a 4% raise. And then, I believe, and I forgot for a little bit of time, PPC, is that, that's the committee, Rob?
Yes.
It went away from me, and I presented the figures to PPC.
Okay, that's.
And it never went that route. At that point in time, there's never been an increase or an adjustment in any of the salaries.
Okay, so I.
The adjustment we made from the beginning was to make sure that all the male and female sports were the same. When we started, that wasn't true. And then when we added a sport, like we added girls' ice hockey, we made sure that that was the same as the boys' ice hockey. But other than that, there have not been any, any raises. But I think that's always gone back to the PPC committee for clubs and coaching.
So by our October meeting, we'll either have it as part of our budget assumptions or Rob will get with Dick and make a recommendation to PPC and we'll update, you know, the board on it, you know, at that time. That way we'll know for sure which way we should go with it. Okay. All right.
All right. I'm just wondering if the evaluation that we have on ASC, that should be tied to the stipends themselves.
Yeah, I haven't gotten there yet, but I, I don't know, that was part of what, again, Dave and Pim were going to try to talk with Dick about. You know, the board had a question on how coaches' evaluations are even being handled, and we didn't have a clear answer last time. I'm not sure if we do now or.
Sort of. Unfortunately, it's pretty clear, but it's not a good answer.
Okay, so they're not, there's no thorough evaluation?
No, you talk about one athletic director, and I don't know how many coaches we have, but it's got to be 40-something teams or something like that.
So the only thing we've started so far is athletic surveys towards that?
Yeah, there's just surveys from, and they vary from students.
That's brand-new. Okay.
And some of them are.
That's a concern. Coaches spend so much time.
Absolutely.
With students, you know, off-school grounds even, so that, that is a concern. So I'm not sure what you guys think, whether you guys and Rob and Dick want to.
I have, as I said, I have a meeting with Dick and our agenda includes.
The evaluation?
That, so we can have some talking around it and pull the subcommittee in a little bit because David kind of outlined what all schools deal with is one athletic director,
Right.
20, 30 coaches. Then we need to get into the category of assistant coaches and freshman coaches, so what systems are out there in place, everything from the hiring process to real-time. And, you know, we've talked about this, about the Athletic Handbook and things.
Yeah.
So hiring the right people, managing expectations, folding in a little, you know, student-parent surveys, et cetera. So we, at the, last year we began discussions of what, what systems might already be in place because everyone struggles with the same issue.
We've actually been talking about this for many years. I mean, we have had people at board meetings expressing horror stories about how kids are being treated, horror stories about, you know, how coaches are driving kids away from sports. And these same coaches are still going and, you know, we still talk about, you know, we're going to come up with a system to evaluate them. Meanwhile, you know, kids are going to continue to either get driven away from something that they want to do, or they're going to deal with this humiliation that happens on, you know, on a daily basis in many sports. It's got to stop some, at some point.
So I just, I'll just want to say, I've never sat here in my few years and had that story happen unless I forgot something. And we do respond, you know, my experience is rarely to that extreme case of being driven away. So I'm not saying it's not, you know, not existing in discussions around kitchen tables or in car rides, but we encourage if it is that extreme, of course, we want to, we'd want to hear about it. But I just want to say that I, you know, I would respectfully consider the extreme illustration of that. And I know that some work has been started in the past that we're going to resurrect and continue. But as I said, I just want to, you know, say, I'm not as familiar maybe as you are with how extreme that seems to be.
Dave?
The surveys, they tried to do surveys this last year, and from what I understood from Dick, some of the surveys are really well-documented and there's a lot of respondents, and some, there are just no respondents, or they're very sparse. And there's almost no.
I happen to know, just from a conversation with Christine about this subject, that I think that, you know, I know if it's Christine or Rob, actually, that I think they're going to, Christine's very involved with the tripod survey, and to make it more scientifically sound, so to speak, that there is some movement towards having Christine help create a survey that where we not only get a better response, but it's, the way it's worded is also much more appropriate to get appropriate responses, you know, from students and eventually parents. So just, just as an FYI, that is, you know, that already is being talked about, so that will help. But I do think it would help too, to have a date that we can expect in evaluation, evaluation system, like maybe a presentation on an evaluation system that's going to be put in place, because we have been talking about an evaluation system for a long time through three different athletic directors.
Yeah.
And so that probably would be good to have just kind of a target date that we could maybe have Dick come and present, you know, what we can expect from a coaches' evaluation system. And we can talk about that at an agenda setting unless anybody has a strong desire to, you know, set it in stone now, we can.
Set what in stone, really?
A date for an evaluation system presentation.
I, I would recommend that we probably try and set a date, you know, really looking forward, so that board members can leave here tonight thinking, hearing from Peter and others. Not that, again, what Rob is saying is absolutely true, we respond when we can, when we know. But I think I would be willing to look at Rob and think if we can pick a date where we can come here and say, here's where we are, including tripods, surveys, an evaluation format, and something we can present to the board for discussion.
And I think part of the, may have been, as you mentioned, through three athletic directors.
Three athletic directors, yeah.
Which at one point was, I think, maybe three in the course of five years.
Yeah.
So that, I think that consistency is.
Yeah, I would recommend that we start it next month and just have, just, nothing else of monthly updates. We may, you may not, and Dick may not have completed formats of how it's going to be, but it'd be like, yes, these are the things that we've looked at, these are the direction we're going in.
Yep.
Other than the following, just continuing updates. Because, you know, Pete says, we've been talking about this for years and we haven't gotten anywhere, and it's frustrating.
It's a very complicated problem.
I agree. Yeah, and you're not going to.
I understand, but the discussions we've had in the past, all those, you know, the principles that apply in the school do not apply on the fields. And the way kids are treated by a high number of coaches is atrocious. It has to change.
All right, so does everybody agree that we get at least a start of a plan next month at October's meeting and that we get monthly updates? But I, I would like to have a target, I mean, for the evaluation system to put into place, not just a monthly update. That was more what I was thinking. So I don't know if anybody has any ideas or if we want to have Rob touch base with, with Dick and part of their update next month is a target date?
Yeah, I think that's.
Okay. All right, so.
What if we say we have the strong foundation of it in place by November or December?
Well, can.
Have something in place.
Um, we could.
They talked about it for three years. It should be pretty easy to put down an evaluation system.
What we ought to tell, what, what Rob ought to go to Dick with is saying, by October's meeting, we need to have a date when we're going to have this ready.
Right. Not just an update on, you know, what they're doing, but a target, let them come to us with a target date next month, as well as an update on what they talked about so far.
Well, you asked them to throw out a target date, I'm saying. Why don't we give them a target date of November or December to have a first cut in an evaluation system?
Does, so what are people's thoughts? Do you want to set a target date now or do you want to let Rob talk to Dick and have them come back next month to us with a target date?
I would say that he could come back next month with a target date, but I also should say that.
And a plan.
Yeah, and, and along with that plan is that we talked about a coaches handbook, and in that coaches handbook could be an ethics sheet like we did for the school board, where, you know, we were telling these coaches what we expect from them, and that's part of their handbook.
I thought that handbook existed.
I think there is something like.
It exists, but I don't think it's been updated for quite enough time.
No, that was, yeah, I mean, honestly, that was supposed to be worked on last summer.
Right.
And then again, this summer. So I, I think a coaches handbook, but I have to say, I think we as board members either need to come up with an ethics policy ourselves that we all will sign, as seeing as our, the other boards have done that. But in order to ask coaches to do that and suggest that, I think we need to set a good example ourselves, so. And there are three board members who did not sign an ethics policy on our board. So I think if we're going to, you know, do that, I think we need to set a good example. Okay, so is everybody, so Pete, you, you would rather throw a target date out ourselves?
Yes.
Howard, you're okay with them coming back to us with a target date? Pim?
Well, in my management experience, you get people to take ownership by having them provide the date rather than being dictated.
Okay.
So I'd rather have them provide the date.
Dave?
Reiterate what Pim said.
Okay. So next month, we'll get an update on a plan and on what the target date is for an evaluation system we put in place.
Yep.
Okay. All right, we skipped over right to the evaluation system, but the approval of the music teacher hire, which really should be under action items, but we can.
It is.
Okay. Okay, okay, good, because it was under informational too. Rob already covered the NIASK, the 2016 graduation, and this also should be under action items, but Pete, if you want to, at least for informational, and then we can vote on it under action items, or now, the baseball field trip?
Sure.
If you guys remember last year, we asked Pete to go back to the coaches and ask for a field trip that was either closer by, that didn't require missed school time or less missed school time.
So, talk to Coach Dodd. And we talked a little bit about, so the timing of year makes it difficult. That's essentially his challenge, is that during that time in early April, to try to find local opportunities is a little bit difficult. So he chose to come back to the board with an alternative trip that as opposed to having students and staff missing three days, we would have students and staff missing two days. So instead of departing on the Wednesday, he'd be departing on the Thursday with a return on Sunday to reduce the amount of out-of-class time. So certainly we know that, you know, there were issues surrounding out-of-class time, but we wanted to come back to the board and see if that was a more palatable option for, for the trip.
None of the activities have changed or?
So.
I mean, obviously, they've been reduced by.
Yep. And I think what's, what you'll find in here is an example from last year, so obviously it would not be exactly the same. That includes the Wednesdays, Wednesday activities, but with, once approval is made, Coach Dodd would then be working with the Pirates facilities and the, and the additional teams that would and the, and the additional teams that would be traveling with Coach Dodd in order to establish what that complete agenda would look like. But until there is approval from the school board, that full agenda would not be organized.
One, one major change, if we, if we stayed Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, on Saturday morning, we would plan on taking the team, the Pirates, to a miracle baseball game and practice on Saturday morning and for handicapped athletes. And we would be able to take our players and go to that and they would, in the morning, would be coaching and assisting the handicapped students from nine to 12. And I think that's a great addition to the, to the program. I, you know, and to have been able to do that in the past because we're playing in the morning and then we're leaving to fly back Saturdays. So, this is a, you know, that would be one of the, a real positive to the, to the trip.
I don't, I don't think Saturday was ever the issue. It was missing school time that was the issue. Like getting back on the weekend wasn't the issue.
From Monday to Thursday to, you know, the two days back.
So...
I don't, I don't get that, Bill. I'm sorry. You would come back, what I heard Peter say is it would be Thursday through Sunday.
Right. Instead of leaving Wednesday, we would leave, we would be out of school two days, Thursday, Friday, instead of Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
David, what he's saying is originally it was going to be Wednesday through Saturday, so they'd play Saturday morning and then fly home.
Oh, okay.
Now he's saying it's, you know, Thursday through Sunday, so that would give them the extra time on Saturday.
Any questions or comments? Dave?
Um, Bill, you know I'm all for sports. I really do like sports. I like my kids involved in sports. I like, you know, other kids being involved in sports. However, we went from a 180-day school year to 175-day school year. That means more gets packed into fewer days. There is nothing to stop a kid from doing a baseball field trip and then in the winter, or in the fall, he does a football, I don't know, football's not really a reasonable thing, but, you know, there are other field trips that could take school days out of that. And you get to the point where, you know, if it's our policy to let kids go off on these trips and take off of school days at all, then I think we're, you know, we're condensing the school schedule as it is and it's just starting to make, not make as good sense to me to do that. I'd love to be able to see you take off in the April vacation or something like that, or even in February or something and do a field trip at that point in time because it's not during school days. You're not missing, missing school activities. I think that's what those vacations are sort of intended for. I remember in years past, my kids did that. You know, we use school vacation times to do that kind of thing. I know this is very specific around having the minor league team there. I know that's one of the big issues that you have with this thing. I'm not discounting that. All I'm trying to say is, is that to me, if we let this thing go off as it is planned, I'm not saying I'm not going to vote for it, I'm just saying I, I just, I don't, I'm not feeling good about the missing of school days on a continuous basis and the expansion of this into other sports, other activities like the arts or whatever it might be. And then you, then you get kids that are here probably 165 school days a year, not, not 175. And, and that's the problem I'm seeing with the expansion of this. So, I said my piece.
Yeah, there are...
I, I agree with that because it's not only the field trips because, like I said, it's baseball. I know hockey had a number of trips, you know, like when kids play on club teams, they have trips that take them out of school. But even in a regular sports schedule, you know, the hockey team has to go to Berlin. They leave, you know, 10:30 in the morning or whatever sometimes. So, you're going to miss school days because of just travel to the away games. That, that's, that is the concern. I mean, it's a great trip. I understand that. But what's the priority? Is it the sport or is it the schoolwork? And like Dave says, with the condensed schedule and longer days, missing a day has much more of an impact than, than it did.
Howard?
You know, I think it goes beyond this. I think it goes to the fact that when these kids miss class, we're teaching them responsibility. It's upon themselves to go back and find out what they missed and make up what they missed. I, I, I will forever tell my children that it's your responsibility to do something. If you take time off to go play golf and don't do what you're required to do, then you have to go back and, and make that up, not me. So, when you tell the children they cannot go on a sports trip because we don't want them to miss school, we're telling them something completely different. We're telling them that we don't want them to do something that they want to do.
Pim?
So, I, I get everybody's points, but one thing, you know, you got to look across the board at, you know, absences in general, right? So, now are you going to stop kids from being, being sick, you know, and missing school because there's an illness?
College visits.
Yeah, college, exactly, college visits, whatever it is. There's going to be reasons why kids are going to miss school and to Howard's point, they are, they have to make up that work, whatever is, is they're missing. If the overwhelming desire is to not allow this trip to happen, then you also, from my perspective, need to look at all field trips that take out any kind of classroom time and you can't let those happen either. So, you know, it's got to be even across the board. You can't just start cherry picking certain trips of not to allow.
We have questioned that on many field, that's why we put it in...
I'm not saying we have a question.
Just a second, guys, just a second. Dave, you have something to add?
I, I, I agree with that and my thinking, first of all, I would not put my kid in position where he could miss school. I'd say, I'm sorry, you know, there are certain things that you're allowed to do and certain things you're not allowed to do. You don't go on field trips just to go play lacrosse in my kid's case, you know. But what I would say is that maybe we should put the onus, as you say, on the kid, but you say you only can miss two or three days. You give them a budget, but they got to work with it, you know, and they've got to make that decision on how to do that. I'm not sure how it's implemented or how it could be implemented, but if you give them the, the responsibility to put it in their lap and just make them decide how they want to spend their two or three days of extra vacation, if you will, let them make that decision. But for us to condone trip after trip after trip, we don't know, we have no idea how to reconcile that. You know, one kid might go on 20 field day trips and another would do not, you know. And so, I think we, and for us to continually let this happen here, day after day after day for, for a particular kid, I don't think that's the right thing to do.
Pim?
I hear what you're saying. Pete, is there a, a maximum number of days that someone is allowed to miss without any, you know, that, that may end up jeopardizing graduation, for example?
We don't have a hard, fast attendance policy. We have a supportive attendance policy where if a student misses seven or more days in a trimester, they're required to check in with each of their, each of their teachers. Really, it's more of a checks and balances to make sure that they haven't missed any gaps in curriculum so that if it comes time for a final assessment, that they'll be prepared for those types of things. But it's not something, attendance is not a disqualifier for graduation or credit or, you know, on a case-by-case basis, if a student is being excessively truant, we don't have a lot of that, but when we do, we address it individually. But we don't have hard, fast rules.
Yeah. I mean, one of the things that pops in my mind is what Dave was just talking about, maybe, you know, in my company, we have, you know, personal time off. So, do you, so do you allot people, you know, students a certain amount of time and hey, if they want to go on a field trip, that counts towards it. If they're sick, that counts towards it. You know, it's, but exactly. So, my point is it starts to get ridiculous, right?
Well, I think sickness is exactly, I mean, a child, a child coming to school sick is going to probably make a number of other children...
But we have rules against that, so we want the sick children to stay home.
Yeah, so sickness is not, is a personal day.
Exactly. So, how do you start to differentiate is my point.
Well, sickness is much different than a field trip.
Yeah, so, but there's still time out of school, is my point.
But there's excuse time out and there's different, there's difference.
I think that's the whole point, Pim. There are many cases where you have to miss if you're sick. Yes, if a senior has to go visit a college, yeah, they have to make their lifetime decision. That's an important reason to miss school. So, there are enough reasons to actually miss school. There are enough other occasions where you're missing it for your sport. We're just worried about adding more days that kids are going to miss because it is very difficult to make up the time.
So, can I ask, Bill, wasn't this field trip done over a weekend at one point, maybe in New York or New York City?
We were in New York. We left Thursday morning. Played Thursday. Friday, we went into the city to UAN or, is the name of the science? And we played Saturday and then we came back. So, it was a...
So, you're still two days of school miss. And I think that was, and I'll speak, Steve is not here, but I, I want to reiterate something that he said when we discussed this last board meeting. I think it was that New York trip because they were missing two days that we said, you know, because we felt like some of the players went in with the expectation of participating in this trip, we, and because you reduced the number of days that were missed to two instead of three or four, we approved if it said this was the last one that we were going to approve. And so, Steve said, you know, that's kind of like, we said it's going to be the last one and now, you know, to come back and approve another one. The other thing, I think, that was brought up last time we discussed this was no other sports team seems to do this. They might miss because of an away game, but no other sports team. And the educational purpose of this, I mean, even a college visit obviously is educational, but we do look, the board has to look at a number of things on a case-by-case basis, not just field trips. And in this case, we've taken these on a case-by-case basis and looked at the educational benefit because, believe it or not, that's what we're here for, is education. And, and, and traveling is educational and I, I agree with you that it's educational, but when these trips first came to us, it was, they came to us under a bonding experience and that was why we originally said, no, you can't miss school because of a bonding experience. Came back the next year as an educational experience, but we said, okay, this is the last trip though. So, that's just as a refresher, I guess, you know, from historically. And, you know, and I don't think that because we deny one field trip, we have to deny all. I think that we look at, like I said, a lot of things on a case-by-case basis. So, we need to decide on this trip as a standalone trip. And I, and I, sorry, Pim, but I do not think this is the same as a sick day. So, so I, I don't think that this, this necessarily, no matter which way we vote, means that we have to vote this way every time for every other field trip. Do you want to come up and speak?
But to pass this up to the board members as well, because I'm Joseph was fortunate to be one of the captains of the baseball team last year. We got to go on the trip. Let me ask the district list to the board.
Okay. We did hear from some, I don't know if he was one of them, we did hear something. Was he one of them? Yeah. I think he came to our board meeting last year.
Yes, he was one of the ones that came. As a parent who has been blessed with having the daughter go on this trip the last two times it's happened, I can assure you, it is very educational, well beyond what my expectations were. And to me, one of the principles that it seems a school was founded on is alternative education, more than just the classroom. And the interaction that these kids get with not only the minor leaguers, but the staff at this facility, which this is a very unique opportunity that I think the school has given, one because of Coach Dodd and two because of Neil Huntington, who is the general manager of the Pirates. As somebody who looks at this as a unique opportunity that we're not sure how much longer it's there, I don't think we should pass this opportunity up. Every year, Coach Dodd has, has arranged for at least one, if not two, minor league players to come address the kids the very first night we're there. And I can tell you, the knowledge of not only baseball, but life in general that these guys convey to the kids is invaluable. The first year I went, they were scheduled to do 45 minutes. They did their initial 45 minutes and then spent another three hours with the kids, talking about every life situation you can imagine. One of them talked about how misusing social media caused them being scouted by B C and that you could watch the impact that had on the kids. I understand that missing classroom time may not be what some people want, but from the alternative standpoint of education, I think this trip is well worth it. And I think the school board should consider how unique of an opportunity is. And I think Joey does a good job of expressing some of the experiences that they've had. So, and as Mark Twain said, should never let school get in the way of an education.
Well, thank you for that. We appreciate that. Does anybody have any...
Again, I don't think any of us were objecting to the trip itself, but the question was, why can't, why can't it be done during the February break or an April break? You know, why can't it be done at a time when it's not going to interfere with school? That's, that's the question. There are other times when you can do it.
The only other thing I do want to add is that the missed school time isn't just about the student and his responsibility of making it work, but it also affects curriculum, it affects the teachers, the teaching that class. There could be group projects going on. Yeah, when, we had a proposal last year at community council about teachers being able to say whether students were allowed to go on field trips or not. And that was some of the comments from the teachers, is it's not just the student missing work, but it's the classroom, you know, even when specific classes like sophomores go on a trip or juniors go on a trip, or winter, winter session is a good example, when all sophomores are gone, well, you might have a class that's sophomores, juniors and seniors and, like, language is a good example where you might have that mix. And it affects the classroom instruction too. So, just another aside when we're considering any field trip.
And a point of clarification, and correct me if I'm wrong, Coach Dodd, but the challenge of the February break is that the, the experience wouldn't exist because the minor league system would not be fully up and functional. The challenge with the April break is that you guys are mid, you're now in your season and it's not avail, like, you know, they would have games and practices, it would make it...
February vacation would also conflict with wrestling, ice hockey, basketball. I would not allow a basketball player to go on a trip like this and be there finishing their season and going into play. So, that's an important conflict that I wouldn't want to start having an athlete have to make a decision. It's so hard today. Our, our society is going to, to play instead of three sports as, as most of you play when you were in high school. It's now one, one, one sport is, is the way to go. And so, I wouldn't want to take February vacation and affect wrestling and hockey and basketball and do anything, you know, to make one sport against the other. So, it just is, you know, a choice that I'd made to stay away from that.
So, if we pursued that idea of going to one vacation, the March week in between sports, that would even help that?
That's a whole nother topic.
But I hate to say, that's a realistic solution because you run into conflicts with every sport and every vacation.
I'm for a year-round school, a few, a few weeks break every, but that's a whole nother topic too.
Yeah, I'm going for a year-round vacation myself.
Dave?
You know, while I respect you, Bill, and I respect the baseball program and I really think that sports has incredible value around, in the school environment, this isn't about, my decision on this is not about baseball. It's not about your son, Mr. Grasset. It's not about any particular kid in the school. It's about what we do, what we stand for as a school board and what we have to do in terms of maintaining some sort of a continuum of program. You know, when things like this happen, their, their kids aren't missing. They're going to miss for other reasons, some, some better reasons, some worse reasons. But to me, it's about what we do, what we as a school board stand for in terms of educating kids in the classroom environment. And it, we have sports. They're a fact of life here at Sahiga. They're going to be there forever. And it's not about not having sports or having the sports experience. My kids had a great sports experience here, you know, and I think, you know, other people's have as well. But, you know, they didn't have a program like this. I'm not saying this, your program is bad. It's not that your program is bad here, Bill. It's that when I look at this thing, I have to look at it in terms of what it does for the whole school and what it does for what we're trying to accomplish as a school board and what we're trying to accomplish in the educational environment. So, that's why I wanted to let you know that that's what I'm thinking about when I make a vote.
I totally agree and I understand that one of the things that Mary Lou spoke about is we, two years ago, we were rejected from the trip and it was revisited when Peter invited me to, to apply last year for the trip because he... invited me to, to apply last year for the trip, because he, it was felt that, that maybe other, you know, it wasn't consistent across the board. So we applied again, and we were, we were told that we were approved. And I don't ever think I heard last year that that was the last one, we couldn't reapply.
I think it was the one before that that we approved.
Correct, and I understand that. And, and so, so two years ago, we went on an overnight with the Cape, and, and then the guy who came to me and said, why don't you apply again, and we'll, we'll see how the application goes. And I applied again, and we were granted the ability to go. And so, yeah, I applied, we went, we had an excellent trip, I decided to apply again. And so the application was turned into Mr. Gagnon, and Peter and I met, and he felt that three days wasn't appropriate. So I said, okay, can I request to go two, two school days? And so I reapplied for the two school days. And so that's, that's what I did, because I believe that it's...
Can you reapply for one school day? Can you, actually, can you, can you cut the trip down further? I mean, you didn't overnight at the Cape. I don't know if, did you meet with any minor league teams on, or?
No, I mean, we, it was just, uh...
We got reworked?
We, we left, we left, uh, we left Saturday, on Friday after school, and, uh, coming back Sunday morning. But if we, if we, if the adjustment was one day, then I would have to meet with Peter and, I think from a financial aspect, traveling down on a plane on a Friday and traveling back on a plane on Sunday, I'm not sure financially that makes a lot of sense.
Leave Thursday night, Bill. Leave Thursday night, Thursday afternoon.
School.
Yeah.
You know, that might be an option, but I'd have to look into prices. You know, we, we went in the morning, we got the best prices last year. I, I got the best, saved a couple hundred dollars by going in the morning rather than going in the afternoon. And so that's why we went in the morning, just to save the parents. But, but if the alternative was to go on Thursday night, we would just have to look at what the cost would be, and is it, is it cost-effective? Like, do I have to meet with Peter and say, okay, this is what we're going to do, we're going to apply for it, or this is a better alternative, we're going to change and do it in this, in this year. Prices were a key factor in, in the cost of, you know, the tickets in the morning, we got just better prices.
And that's understandable. You don't want to raise the cost unnecessarily. I can't see, when, where are the dates on here again?
Six, seventh, eighth, and ninth, I believe.
Seven, eighth.
I remember six, six, seven, eighth, ninth.
By what month?
April.
April, okay, that's what I thought, but I couldn't see the dates on here. So, um, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but when do you, when is your drop dead date as far as letting parents know and making reservations, all of that?
Well, we would just have to know, so we, I mean, we'd have to get another school that wants to travel down with us. You know, it's, it's letting the Pirates know, so they don't give it to somebody else, give the oops to somebody else.
And when do you typically have to let them know by?
Uh, they would love to know as soon as possible.
Because my thought is, rather than voting the trip down or up, you know, is there an alternative? Is there an alternative to looking into less missed school time? I don't know what anybody else feels, but I would be more comfortable with that. Howard?
Well, I have a question for, for Peter. There are other athletes from club teams that miss school because they have competition. What comes to mind is particularly cheerleaders who do ECE and other club cheer, and they go to Dallas, they go to Miami, they go all over for competitions. Do they come to you and ask you for time off to be able to go to these competitions?
Nope. That's not...
So they just assume that they take responsibility?
So are you talking about like an external group, like I'm in cheerleading all-star group and I'm traveling to, or, no, no, I mean, because it's not a school-sponsored event?
But they miss school.
They're not required my permission to?
So they have to go to the school, their teachers, and?
Yeah, the responsibility is on them to check in with teachers in advance. It's, you know, like anyone who misses extended...
So it's no different than here, right? That we want them, if they want to go on a, on a, on a competition, they have to make up their time, and they have to go talk to the teachers.
Correct.
So why can't we let these athletes do the same?
There is one difference. Like, we went through that with hockey. Like, my son played on travel hockey teams, aside from the school. So one year, he had a chance to play in Lake Placid and missed two days of school. That was a huge debate for us, whether he was going to go. We chose it because it was a one-time occurrence, and it was just him. It wasn't, you know, a baseball team is 20 to 25 kids. And, you know, if you think about it, you're going to have, you know, five or six seniors, five or six juniors, they're probably taking classes together.
But you allowed him to go.
We allowed him to go, but we had very, we timed it so he missed one class on Thursday, and then he missed Friday. But that was one student missing that. What I'm saying now is, you take 25 kids on a baseball team, say four or five of them are in the same class, that class has 15 kids in it, well, for those two days, they're off playing baseball, the rest of the class is not going to be the same dynamic as what it would have been. The teacher may not teach the same thing. So it's, it's an impact on the education of everyone. That's, that's the difference to me.
So to the other point of that, Bill, has anybody, any parent not allowed their student to go on the strip because of academics?
Bill, how many kids do you take?
I'm not sure we know that for sure.
How many kids do you, how many players do you take?
Last year, we took four, fifteen. Three years ago, we took eighteen.
Okay, so, um, without voting, but kind of a roundtable, is, do you want to vote this up or down, or would you like to see if maybe this could be, like Dave's suggestion and, and, or Dave and/or my suggestion, see if they could leave Thursday night as opposed to missing two days of school? Is one day even too much to people who?
Mr. Grasset has a question first.
What's that? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
You're talking about leaving Thursday night. As someone who frequently books, here at Columbia, it's the Tampa, which is where we fly into, because I have a daughter, I go to school there. Bill's writing about, it's cheaper in the daytime, earlier in the day, as well as the non-sol flights, I mean, earlier in the day. So leaving Thursday, which you're traveling with 15 kids, you know, all the year, and trying to switch points, is adding to the interest of you grabbing a direct flight. So logistically, as you guys are thinking about this, I'm like, do you keep that as well as possible?
Yeah, I was just trying to give an alternative as opposed to voting it up or down.
And it's a self-funded trip.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so, does anybody have a motion then? No one wants to put a stake in the ground, I understand that.
I'm, I'm not quite sure what direction you, yeah, I mean...
Well, it sounds like that, that Thursday night isn't really an, an alternative, is what I'm hearing, right? It sounds like you're not really willing to consider Thursday night as an alternative.
I'm willing to look into the price differential, and that would be my only concern, is, is if it's that great, greater amount, I would hate in today's economy to, to, to make a major price increase. And so I, I guess that, you know, I, I look into other alternatives and get back to Mr. Gagnon with, with other alternatives, if you, if the direction is that the board would allow us to do one day Friday, and then look into what we could do to leave on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, economically as well as the school, as what is best economically, school, school loss, all, looking into everything.
Okay.
So I, I, I don't know if I answered your question.
Yeah, no, you did. So it sounds like it is an option to look at different alternatives and come back to us in October, but I guess the motion would have to be...
Well, I was just going to say, if you're still looking for like a straw vote, in my opinion, and I'm sorry to say this, but I would be against 18 kids missing two days of school, yes.
Okay. But, but what I was going to suggest is, the motion could be on, in a turn, on an alternative that would only require one day of school missed. I mean, and that would obviously be dependent upon, you know, Pete and, and Bill getting together. But I guess, you know, that could be a motion, is that we would look, we'd be willing to approve an alternative where there's only one day of school missed. You know, or someone can make an, a motion to accept this trip as stated.
Would the board be okay with me asking Peter Gagnon a question?
No.
Okay?
Yes.
Yes, Peter. So, so he has a kind of a crazy question, but I think Mr. Maresko brought it up earlier. Do we have teams that, in our schools, that leave early to go to a contest, a game, whatever? And would we, we don't have, I don't know if we have the data, Peter, I don't know if you do, but, so what I'm going at, so we're talking two days, 15 hours of school. Do we have trips that travel or get out early, 10:30, 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock, where a student or more than 10 students might miss even more than two days of school? Is that even?
Over, over an entire season?
Or an entire year, if a kid's playing more than one sport?
I would have. I certainly don't have the data like right in my head, but I can't, I can't imagine that there isn't experience being a former coach of taking kids out of school on away trips, just for one season, and knowing the amount of time that I missed as a former coach. I'm sure it all adds up to more than, it would add up to more than two full school days.
But, but, but let me add here, team play, scheduled team play is essential. This is discretionary. This is discretionary option. This is not required of the team necessarily. Is it required of the team, Bill? I can't imagine you've done that.
Excuse me?
Yeah, so it's discretionary.
Right.
Going to an away game at Berlin or Hanover or something, that's required as a team. So there's no, there's a big difference between these kinds of events that you sanction, okay?
I was, I was looking at time ups.
No, I, I, I understand that, but I'm saying, you know, we, when we sign up to be in the HIAA and participate in lacrosse or whatever the thing is, we, that's what we agreed to, you know? We agreed to go to Hanover or whatever. But we don't agree necessarily to go on this trip, okay? So I...
I thought you had done, sorry.
All right, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, since you mentioned my name, the reason I brought that up was because as part of the normal schedule, you're going to, the kids are going to miss days because of travel.
Competition.
They're going to get home late at night. They're going to not be able to do homework on many nights. They have to practice six days a week, sometimes seven days a week. There are enough demands on their time to take away from school, that, like they said, a discretionary trip, that, that, I just get very concerned about it.
Do you have a comment to add?
Yes, Melanie Grayson.
Yeah.
This is also one of the first times that the team gets to actually hit the field and practice as a team from their winter training. This, this was foundational to, to get them to the championship this year.
Jay Grasset, I was lucky enough to be on the team this year, and I didn't go on the trip, but talking with like players that did go on the trip, they all, our first two games, we lost those, and then we went on to win the rest of them in the championship. And looking back on those first couple that we did end up winning, kids often talked about just getting back to the basic works, and a lot of it came from what came at Pirate City. So a lot of the kids went back to stuff that they learned, or even just what they did down there.
Thank you for that. Okay, so I think we've heard enough from, you know, both opinions, and I don't think there are necessarily any more questions. This has probably been the longest agenda item on the, on the agenda side, but that's okay, it's good, I mean, I, I kind of almost feel like going forward, it, it might be in our best interest to maybe put some guidelines, you know, because while we do consider things on a case-by-case basis a lot, you know, student issues in particular, it would be nice for the board to have more guidelines around this. And so, that's, we're not going to come up with that tonight, but I can put that down as an action item, you know, for another time, and maybe even have the...
Well, we suggest that Rob and Peter, or, I don't know, Peter and Dick have, you know, come up with some proposals on alternatives that we can have here. So then we have some guidelines that we want to look at in the future, they, they propose some, or?
Yeah.
We have some discussion on it.
It's not just athletic, though, you know?
Yeah, no, I know, it's, well, it's, 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 it's curricular as well.
Well, but I mean, it's even, you know, academic and all of that, so I think it's a larger, yeah, it's a larger, but, but no, I, I know what you're saying, because I, you know, from a field, from an athletic field trip standpoint, I think, you know, that's a good idea, but it is larger than that. So I'll put it down as an action item, and we can kind of brainstorm our little idea how to handle that. But, in the meantime, I think we have probably discussed all the points that need to be made. And again, I think that we can either make a motion that, that maybe Bill come back in October with, after meeting with Pete, with maybe a proposal for missing one day of school, or we could make a proposal, sorry, a motion to accept the field trip as stated. I think those are the two options, it seems like, you know, we have right now, Pim.
Does it have to be a motion that we ask him to come back with a, with a one-day option? I don't think so.
Well, no, it doesn't have to be, but I guess, I want to be clear as to whether we're voting this, on this field trip or not. So I guess, if we ask him to come back, we don't have to vote on that, but I just want to be clear as to whether we need to vote on this specific field trip. So we can just do a whiparound and see what everybody thinks, as opposed to a vote, you know, is it, you know, would you like to vote now, Howard, or would you rather ask him to come back?
I, I would vote now. I would vote in favor of it.
Okay. Pete, are you open to the idea of, because I, I know you're not open to two days, are you open to the idea of coming back with one day missed?
Well, that's what I was saying before. I, I am still against the idea of missing two days. My only choice, suggestion would be, I know they can't wait to make plans, so rather than waiting...
You said you wouldn't look into alternatives.
No, I know, they'd look into it, but I think if they find an alternative, they would have to book it, rather than wait for us to approve it next month, and then the tickets may not be available. So could we do a conditional approval of a one-night option if it exists?
Yes.
If, if, I mean, I don't know what the vote would be for the two-night trip, if that's what we're going to vote on.
Well, that's why I was saying, we could either vote on...
But I'm saying, well, I think, since that is what they asked, we have to vote on it. If they get enough votes, then my opinion doesn't, doesn't matter.
Or we could make a motion, to Pim's point, and have a vote on accepting a one-day school miss alternative. That way, they don't have to wait until next month for our approval. So we, we can vote on that, if that's the will of the board. We can...
I think, I think that's what I'm saying, yeah, we should just, but don't pay, we have to vote.
I think you're in violent agreement.
Yeah.
In my opinion.
I don't, we don't, Bill has agreed to look into alternatives, so I don't think that we have to vote on this. As, you know, presented to us, I think if he's willing to look at alternatives, I think we can vote on the approval of one day missed, since he has already agreed to look into that alternative.
I think in order to do it fairly, though, you have to do the vote for the, as it is stated, first, and then make another motion after that, to do, to agree to a one day, if he can find the accommodations.
Well, honestly, I, I'm torn on it, and I'm looking around, and we have four board members, and I would be the... and I would be the tiebreaker as chair, so, and I'm honestly torn on it, which is why I was leaning in the direction of maybe looking at the alternative. No, I'll vote if I have to, but I, I don't, I would rather give an alternative. We could vote and then make another motion, but I'm just trying-
I make a motion that we accept the baseball trip as, as stated.
Okay, is there a second? If there's no second, then that motion is, okay. Is there any other motion?
I make the motion that we accept a three day trip, one day missed class, one day missed classes. But a stipulation for that would be that the administration come back to us with guidelines or some sort of proposal or some sort of discussion, I'm not sure we're gonna have the guidelines, but some sort of discussion and the trade offs that we have to make in order to set a policy, you know, something that's in a policy realm that we can use as a guideline in the future. One, and my comment about it is one item taken out of context can, you know, set guidelines for all other kinds of things, and I'd rather not do that. I'd rather be able to have some sort of stabilized guidelines that the administration, you know, proposes that we can use as a guideline to judge other things by. There may be situations where we say five days is great, you know, but this one, I couldn't say that. So that's my, my motion is really a one day trip. Well, I'm sorry, take that back. One school day excused.
Okay. Can we take out the stipulation that the administration come back to us with guidelines? Because the-
Yeah, 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 that, that can be a directive by, yeah, we can do that.
And I, and I'll explain why, Dave, because this-
Yeah, yeah.
Application for field trips was supposed to be our guideline. So I think more thoughtful to go to it.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
So any seconds to that motion?
Yeah. You state what you're saying, just one day of no missed school?
No, one missed day of school as opposed to two missed days of school, but they would, you know, they would, they could leave Friday morning for all I care, you know, if they wanna get a, a lower fright, lower rate, but that's a decision they can make, one missed day of school.
That way if they find an alternative, we don't have, they don't have to wait till next month. So any second to that motion? Pete, seconds? Further discussion? Let me do the, the clock.
Call a question?
I'm still thinking. The Jeopardy clock?
I'd like to ask Coach Dodd what he thinks the likelihood of being able to change it and be as effective of a trip for the Friday through Sunday, you know, versus obviously Thursday through Sunday. Would it be, you know, obviously not, let me kinda somewhat restate that, it won't be as effective as to get all the things that you want to get done in that timeframe, but would it be effective enough? Would it be worth it?
Depending on the price.
The, the, first of all, I greatly appreciate your time and, and all the effort and the mental energy that we've done, but I think it's real important because we've done this for, this trip forever in various ways and I think it would be applying to do this is only, I think since Peter's been here, that this policy has, has come forth and I think the mental gymnastics will help in the future. I cannot, I can only say that we will do a trip and we will do the best job that we can with, with changing. It will create, change what we've done in the past, the past three out of four years, but we will come up with an alternative that's in the best interest of the kids.
On the positive side, Bill, I love what you described for Saturday morning.
Yeah, I, I-
Yeah. At least that won't be missed.
Was excited about that because we have to do that in the past. But, but we will, we will come, we will come and find something. I'm sure that, again, cost may, may change that we don't go to Florida, that we may do something else, but, you know, we'll, we'll approach those after we vote.
Okay. Other questions or discussion?
Can I just get a clarification?
Yep.
So-
No.
So what David is proposing is that reducing the trip, one day school missed, are we saying that Coach Dodd could then walk out of this meeting and start to establish what that trip is?
He can book a trip with one day of school missed.
Book a trip with the, yes, with one day school missed.
Yes.
I would also advise that he just restate this form, just so this run the record.
So, so he'd be coming back with the planned trip at the next meeting?
No, he doesn't have to come back.
But restate it so that the board can see it.
They're gonna vote tonight.
Yeah, if he votes tonight, he doesn't have to come back.
I think it'd be good to see what the final plan is, but it doesn't have to wait for additional authority.
It'd be for our information only.
Yeah.
Is that clear? Yeah, okay. All right, so no further discussion? All in favor of the motion on the table, which is to allow Bill Dodd to plan a trip where there'd be one missed day of school and, yeah, no need to come back if he doesn't want to. Pete can always listen too. So all in favor? Opposed? Okay. All right, so it's four, so it passes, so thank you for taking the time to come here and thank you as parents and student also for taking the time to come. Okay, so, let's see. Oh, actually, yeah, we haven't met since then.
Coach?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead, yeah.
Have we had a chance to congratulate our coach?
No.
We haven't met since then.
We should.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Congratulations on your award.
Bill, 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 can you come up here with the mic? Or listen, I'm getting the mic. Bill, hang on.
No, no, I, I, everybody's too nice to me.
Don't ever, don't say that.
No, it is true. My, my coaches and my kids do more to me than they should. Last, last spring was a, just a phenomenal experience from, from December through our, our end of the season. We had great students that represented the building wherever we were in, in just a great, great light. We had some highlights and one of the highlights that they, they really embraced a little more than I realized was me reaching the most wins plateau and, and they were just phenomenal about that. We had a eighteen game run, which was fantastic, coming away with four games in the tournament and the semifinal game and the final game were, were great. Rob, Rob really enjoyed the finals.
Well, I, I don't know if you publicly wanna mention it, my, it was my call to steal home.
Yeah, your call, it was your call. You and Thomas, you and Thomas worked that out.
So maybe he should have won Coach's victory.
Absolutely. But we had, we had seven all-state players, three first team, two second team, two third team, Coach Pelavoe was the assistant coach of the year. And one of, a highlight in addition to all those great things was the fact that the team was honored by the Division Two baseball coaches as the sportsmanship award. So-
A lot for our kids and the coaching of our kids.
It was great, great for the kids and, you know, with, you know, Dr. Lally, I had Dr. Lally about forty years ago in class in Riviera. And, and one of the, one of the things that I picked up from Dr. Lally is, was the fact that whenever you, you're teaching or coaching or administrating, you wanna do the best job so that your students wanna go to your school and if you don't give them the most that you can, they can go somewhere else. And so that, that's always been my philosophy, to try to give as much and something new to move the program on every year. And it's, Peter, you mentioned it's, it's very difficult to coach. It was difficult when I started forty-eight years ago. It's difficult today. And, and I, I do think that the caliber of coaches and the caliber of teachers and the caliber of administrators at Sohegan High School is absolutely fantastic. And, and we do make mistakes and we do stub our toe periodically and I think you're, what you're trying to look for is what we all want, a greater program. And so that's why I try to do some of these things like going to Florida. And it's, it's making sure though that the board has to look at what's in the best interest of eight hundred people, not just eighteen. So it was a great year and, you know, it's, so this, greatly appreciate having me finish up talking about the season. I could go on for the next two hours, but you'll kick me out of here.
Coach, but thank you for, first of all, understanding, you know, that we are looking out for eight hundred and something as opposed to eighteen, but-
Yeah.
And, and also understanding it's not a reflection on everything you've dedicated all these years to, to the players. I mean, that's greatly appreciated and-
Yeah, no, I, I understand and, and, you know, Pete's been great working with Peter and, and making sure that I'm doing things the right way and, and, you know, to be honest, when we started doing the trip to K.O. in, in the beginning of time, twenty-five years ago.
I remember that.
You know, the exchange with the K.O. High School coming here in basketball with the boys and girls, which was a Japanese high school and then we'd go there, which, we didn't go to Japan, we went to Westchester County at the high school there. But it was just to constantly do something to make the athletic program, to make the baseball program, something that was gonna do better and so.
Well, and like Mr. Grassett said, that is, you know, right in line with our principals here at, our founding principals at Sohegan, and so I hope tonight was a good compromise on that and, you know, hopefully we'll get an update next month as to whether it was.
We'll, we'll put something together and we're gonna give the kids the best possible experience that we can. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Should have let, let him lead before we had the discussion.
I know. Then we all, there would have been unanimous vote.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to go over that motion. David Chen made a motion to allow Coach Bill Dodd to plan the baseball trip with one missed day of school.
And Pete Maresko seconded and it was four, four and one opposed. Yep. Okay, so we already went over the curriculum under discussion again. You know, some of these were a little out of order this month, so I apologize, but I think it is, we had a lot and we narrowed it down and I think-
Mary Ann and I both were a little out of order with her leaving, so.
Yeah, I know, you probably were.
I, yeah, we were, yeah.
But the, that, it brings us to the raising athletic fees and implementing equipment rental fees. That was something that came up last month and so I put it on the agenda for discussion, discussion purposes and I know that we had a community member talk about how Amherst raised their fees. I will say that it wasn't that long ago that we not raised ours only by fifty percent, but we doubled ours from fifty, well, doubled our parking from fifty to a hundred dollars and raised athletic fees substantially for every sport and we, when we went to our tiered fee structure. So we have done that, they are in line with or in some cases higher and maybe in a couple cases lower than schools, but we looked at a number of schools and I was on the committee, which is why I'm speaking and so was Pim, so he can add to it. We looked at a number of neighboring schools, what their athletic fees were for different sports, what they contributed, you know, for equipment, what, I don't think we looked at parking fees, did we? I think we just raised our parking fee, I don't think we looked at what other schools charged. But we did do that study and raised ours quite a bit. So while it is a good idea to increase our revenue, I'm not sure if it's fair to parents and athletes right now is, and again, being on the committee, that's my take on it. Pim, if you wanna add to it?
In general, I agree with what you're saying. I think there's other aspects and I don't have the emails in front of me, but there's other aspects to equipment rental fees that make that particularly difficult to administer, especially when, like I said, there's, there's other emails that, that explain it and maybe that requires a separate disclaimer discussion when I have my thoughts together.
Yeah. Well, and I think it was Dwayne actually that asked for this be put on because he was on the advisory finance committee when this came up and unfortunately he's not here tonight, but he didn't also email any further thoughts on it. So I don't know if anybody else has any further thoughts on it, given the history? No?
I honestly don't know the history of it at all, so I'm not gonna come-
I just gave you the history.
Yeah, well, I don't remember fees, you know, years ago, but that doesn't mean anything.
Well, this is three years ago that we did this, raise the parking and athletic fees?
Yeah.
Yeah.
At least.
Maybe four?
Yeah, I think my second year.
And it's more now though, I think, isn't it? Oh, it is, okay. Which was three years ago, so it was, so it was either-
Year four of the-
This would be year four.
Yeah, this is year four.
Okay. So it would, you know, like I said, increase our revenue if we, you know, with, again, budget assumptions coming up next month, if we feel like that is a way that we wanna approach increasing our revenues. Doesn't, we don't need to vote tonight, it was just a discussion and again, unfortunately Dwayne's not here because he's the one that asked for it, but-
Was he asking to raise them or?
It was something that came up on the advisory finance committee and that's why he brought it up.
Before I could even vote for that, I'd like to see what the numbers were, what we take in, you know, what gets spent. I know everything just goes in the general fund, but, you know, if you tell me that baseball accounts as X amount into the general fund and we have to pay out X amount, it's better for me to understand that part of it, other than just saying we're gonna raise these, these fees.
Yeah.
I mean, talking to other parents, parking fees are twice as much as some of the other schools around here.
That's good to know, so I'm not sure we looked at, like I said, the parking fees, but the athletic fees, we definitely looked at neighboring schools. And now whether neighboring schools have increased theirs in the past three years, you know, I don't know. But I also am leery of giving Dick another project to do, you know, to go to neighboring schools and start comparing, I mean-
We gotta set priorities.
Right, we have to prioritize our administrator's time too. So unless anybody wants to give that, you know, kind of directive from a budget standpoint, but I think budget seizing is coming up quickly and I don't think that Dick needs another project because we're also asking for the evaluation system to be done, which, and, and the handbook, and that's gonna be a lot of work in, in and of itself. Okay, so I'm not getting the feeling that anybody really wants to approach that subject or have Dick do a study right now, okay? S.A.U. thirty-nine budget committee, community member, oh, it's getting late, refresh my memory, who, I know for the past couple of years, I think it was Jason Bender, was that our, we have to appoint a community member to the S.A.U. budget committee.
Well, we had, we have had a number of people. So we had Charlene Carper, I think.
Okay, that's right, that's her last, Charlene last year. To represent, and I'm not sure his first name is Jason, but- To represent, and I'm not sure his first name is Jason, but I should know that, he was on the ski team with my kids, but he, I think he was for two years before Charlene, I think, if I remember correctly.
Correct. Adam, do we, did Betty leave you any names for that?
Sometimes she would give us suggestions, or people would volunteer, or she would strong-arm them.
Okay. So, we, let's do a little research on our own, and we can come back with a name in October.
Okay. And if anybody has any ideas of a community member that would want to serve to represent Sohegan on the S.A.U. Budget Committee, let, you know, you can email me and let me know. I mean, do you have any, you know, retired friends that might have...
Lots of retired.
That might wanna, that might wanna be, well, that might wanna be on the S.A.U. thirty-nine...
Have you reached out to the ones that were on it last year?
No, because I can't remember who was on it last year.
Yeah, we have to look at those, too.
We had Ian Cochran from Montverden, and Jane King from Montverden.
Well, no, this is, this is just one member to be on the S.A.U. thirty-nine.
Oh, I thought you were talking about our school budget.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm sure Betty left notes for Adam on the ones that were on last, oh, no, it's not Adam, it's, it's Addie Hutchinson. Yeah, and Addie has those names, but this is just for the S.A.U. thirty-nine.
We'll, we'll do a little research.
Okay.
No, just question.
Okay. Okay. And, well, Peter's gonna see if, who was last year, maybe if it was Charlene, she might be willing to, but yeah, if you have ideas, Dave, let us know. The DOE MS-25, Adam, do you want to speak to that? Yeah, I know you gave it to me already, for us to sign, but, and I will pass it around.
I'm told you're familiar with the DOE-25 and the MS-25. That's the annual form, that's a report of all the expenditures and revenues for the school district for the prior fiscal year, the end of June thirtieth, twenty sixteen. One key metric that comes out of that report is the cost per pupil calculation. It's used by the state and reported widely. Your cost per pupil for last year was eighteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents, with an ADM of eight hundred and thirty students, point nine, eight thirty, point nine-four students, average daily membership. So, your cost per pupil went up slightly as your ADM went down slightly.
I'd like to see that point nine-four student.
Really?
Well, it's the ADM. It's the average daily attendance.
I know, Dave.
So, that's the day that Bill Dodd took his, baseball players on a top, so up.
I knew somebody was gonna...
And, and we are familiar with, I mean, Betty goes over it every year, and she does an overview, like, you know, like you did, so I don't know if there are any questions. No, I didn't assume there would be. Okay, well, the superintendent and I have to sign this, but I will pass this around for school board members to sign.
There's technically two forms, one's a DOE form for the Department of Education, one's for the Department of Revenue Administration, so there are two separate forms, same data and two different formats.
Is that the MS...
Oh, that's right.
MS-25 is a different format?
It is. It's the same data, but in a slightly different format.
Can I, can you tell me where the, I looked through this thing, and I couldn't figure out where the number is that you come down to, that gets returned to taxpayers?
Oh, okay, yep.
Is it on this MS-25?
I'm not sure about the MS-25, it's on the DOE-25, on the first page, and it's on the second column over.
No, but Adam said we didn't need it put on.
Do you only have one blue signature?
We'll take it.
Adam, where is the number for the return of the healthcare trust?
Yeah, I know. I guess you guys have sent this one to us.
Is this the number for the, because I had this marked? No, that would be under, those are all your trust funds that are held up to trustees of the trust funds. It'd be under column one there, all the way to the left end of the general fund. You receive those funds to your general fund, and under revenues, you're looking at the assets.
Okay, under revenues here.
In the revenue section, which is probably the page before that.
Page before the...
I'm sorry, page after, then. I, I can show you after, Mr. Schon, if you'd like.
Do you need the signature of the missing school board members?
Nope. Just the majority of the board.
Okay. All right, so, yeah, come on.
I was just gonna say, someone needs to make a motion to awaken them.
We're gonna have to sit down and figure this out, Adam. I can't find this here.
Correct.
Oh.
Thank you.
Yes.
Somebody wanna make a motion to that effect?
Sure.
All right, and Pim seconds. All in favor?
That's what you said.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta deny, so, yeah, all in favor? Okay, this is just authorizing the signatures, Dave, I don't know if you heard deny. Okay, so while you're signing, I'm gonna move on and let Rob, I think, right, the professional nomination?
Motion to, oh, what?
Yes, all in favor? No, the professional nomination, Rob, nominations.
Is it, this one's Pim, is that... Oh, Kim Whitehead? Yep. So, June meeting, we revisited our need for serving students who are interested in the performing arts. Two years ago, I believe, we had one and a half folks in the music department la, last year. We had one person, Carl, was able to, you know, hold on the fort, essentially, and we did some after-school programming, and Carl did some work with the middle school, which we're very proud of, and our numbers have swelled. And so, last June, I made the recommendation that we bring that point five position back, and we were really proud and happy to announce that Kim Whitehead has accepted that position. She's very well-known in the community, and quite frankly, was integral in the after-school program, and was migrating students toward credit-bearing experiences, so she will be point five this year, which is essentially the course classes, which Carl had adopted and did some training to be able to do the year before, and her classes are, I think, you know, in the mid twenties, high twenties.
Rob, am I correct that it's point three? Am I remembering something?
Did I say point, I think it was...
I think it's a point three.
A point four, or point three, or...
It's a compromise.
I thought it was like a point, yeah, it's so, she, one, you know, one period, yep.
Okay.
Point three means she's one period?
Essentially, yeah, during the trimester. I think when I, oh, we had lost a point five, that's where I had point five, right, so yeah, we probably went from a point three.
And now, we, refresh my memory, after summer, we already voted to approve the hire, so now, did we, didn't we already vote to approve the hire of the position?
We did, but we have to vote now.
No, I'm just done.
I'm putting a name and nomination, so you have to vote on the particular individual.
Okay, yep. So, motion, Pim motions to accept the professional nomination?
Kim Whitehead.
Howard seconds, okay. Oh, sorry, Howard, done?
What will that do for Carl's load?
It, he'll do a full load, his teaching load, the combination of, he was doing over and some courses that were registered, so he's at point four, three.
So, the classes that he was teaching that she's taking over, he was doing on his free time, on his free period?
He was doing as part of where we weren't offering, one of the ones that he had normally taught, plus it was, he was doing a little over to make up for that, yeah.
Any other discussion or question?
What classes is Tiffany to teach, Rob?
The course.
Acapella course?
Acapella will be, continue to be an after-school.
Okay. And is she teaching any other classes at all, or...
No, she'll do the handbells, she'll, so she'll maintain some of the after-school clubs that used to be some credit-bearing, so we want to keep that, and we'll monitor the participation and interest, but, yeah, acapella and handbells will be after-school.
I remember you saying that last year, that as that increases, maybe, you know, will increase her or another, you know, teacher's, is that participation increases, I mean?
Yeah, and we might maintain those are great after-school, because every department is looking at next-generation curriculum, and that might be music theory courses, or voice, or some, yeah, so, but we have reestablished that point three, and, well, in the, in the time of STEM, 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 we don't want to forget the arts, and so we're really excited about it.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table, if there's no further discussion, all in favor? Okay, unanimous? All right, so, let me make sure I haven't missed anything, because we moved things around. Okay, no, I don't think, I think that's...
She's afraid of her.
Oh, in that packet, there was three other resumes, I saw that, too, a Spanish teacher, and...
Yeah, like special ed.
Yeah, special ed, Spanish.
Hold on.
World language, and learning specialist.
Yeah, and there were resumes in the packet for that, are we not doing those nominations tonight?
No, we should, I'm, I'm thinking...
Okay.
Yeah, they're gonna start.
Well, I didn't know, I didn't know if maybe it wasn't decided.
I didn't see any issue with that was for.
Yeah, me too, I just saw, yep, world language, but, yeah, so, fill us in, Rob.
Okay, so, some of you, or many of you, most of you, Madame Secoller, retired last year, French teacher, so, a very popular, had a heavy course load, very popular courses. So, our attempt, original attempt was, and we did post, and actually had a few, but the, the reaction was not as we had hoped, for our dual-certified French, Spanish, and we've spoken about that, that, you know, that, taking that approach going forward, and, you know, we're really looking at hires with a, you know, kind of a dual skill set. We were surprised, because we've had some luck the day before, Michelle Casto, Sarah Laurent, were both dual-certified, some discussion I had with other principals, similar situation, I don't, you know, very interesting to see that the applications were, you know, were disappointing. We then reposted, taking the Spanish portion out of that, because we want, you know, because French, as I said, is very popular, and had a, again, very interesting that we didn't have a very deep pool, we had one candidate we loved, and we're very close to hiring him, but his other district loved him just as much, and I think kind of sweetened the pot, so that left us this summer, you know, continuing the search, and we were, I think, very lucky to have somebody who was teaching in Massachusetts, and I think they wanted to, they were moving to New Hampshire, et cetera, so we hired Elisa Knox, from, she was most recently at North Andover, Mass, and she came very highly regarded by her former administration, so that was a hire this summer, mid to halfway through the summer, so she'll be teaching essentially Madame Secoller's French courses. One of the things that was most impressive during her interview is we asked her something that she had done at her school, and she mentioned that their school had gone through some downsizing, and they didn't have any department coordinators, and their administrative team was also downsized, so she was essentially, there was very little oversight, so they were left to their own devices. And then she explained, so, some teachers and I did some research, and we decided to, you know, kind of start building this approach, and it actually is exactly what our world language department is working on right now.
Oh, that's great.
So, it was a little, yes, so it was a little bit cynical, and they're, who are you talking? So, we, I think, so I think it'd be a little bit of a seamless entry, and actually some value added immediately. Laura Gardaki, learning specialist, sometimes the, you know, karma is great, she was a learning specialist intern here two years ago, and when we said goodbye to the interns, all the learning specialists stood up and said, she, Laura's our best learning specialist. They, we loved her, she was fantastic, we didn't have an opening, she went to Portsmouth and has kept an eye on us every day, she says, since she left, and...
I suppose, well, for Sohegan.
So, some of you may have even met her, she's recently out of college, but boy, is a real veteran at heart, and the energy of an intern, and we're really, really shocked, so we're very excited to have been able to get her back.
Great, and I think that was it, right? I didn't see a...
No, there's one more.
Oh, okay.
Tracy Cody.
Yep, Tracy Cody, school psychologist. Chrissy, who was with us for four or five years, was fantastic, and decided to go into more of a private practice, and school psychologist, another area that sometimes is tricky to, to come up with, and Tracy, who was at the middle school for years, and has a really great connection with students, decided, you know, she has also expressed that she's had her eye on Sohegan, so we hired her, I believe, early summer, end of the spring, so again, we're excited, very familiar with the district.
Yeah, I thought we already approved that for some reason, that's why I forgot about her, yeah.
We can still talk, yeah.
Yeah, we can reapprove her, just in case.
She's an hour from her work at the middle school, for sure, she's fantastic, without question.
Well, if, if everybody's comfortable, we can make a motion for all three at once, unless you want to do them individually. Okay, does anybody want to make a motion, Pim?
Sure.
To approve all three of those nominations?
Yeah.
Okay, any seconds? Howard, seconds? I know, they seem to be the two that are firsting and seconding, yeah. Any further discussion on any of the three? Seeing done, all in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Maybe Rob can make his motion now to adjourn.
Well, no, actually, I want to, just one more thing, if you don't mind, I want to just, the review of the meeting, or more importantly, the agenda items, and I want to see if I missed anything. So, I had agenda items already going into this meeting, and then got more coming out, but I'm trying to read my scribbles, so, and I want to do this also this month, so you guys know how much we have on for next month, so that we might need to move some of this, and I'll send it out over email, too, but so far, we have budget assumptions for next month. We have typically in October started our quarterly updates, which includes updated student-teacher ratio, teacher-facing numbers, number of teacher, or class loads, report on co-curricular participation, and cost and participation by sport, by student, update on our sick day usage, we were supposed to look at field trip policy changes for the addition of safety issues, staff timeline, PD, winter session, community service, field trips, kind of a snapshot of staff timeline, this came up last year, and that was from Trumbullink, that we've gotten that before, PTSA update, CIP update, NHIAA update on hockey, because from the, for the combined teams, math assessment, performance data, Dave wrote about five through twelve, I think that maybe we'll have some discussions with Christine and, and Dave, maybe you can be a part of that, or emails. I already spoke with her briefly, five through twelve would be difficult, just because of the testing, it's not the same testing, we have new one through tenth grade, but then the eleventh grade is starting with PSATs and SATs, and so, you know, we'll have to kind of see what we want to report on, based on the testing not being, but I have that for next month, she might just cover the nine through twelve part of it, but I think that that needs to be a further discussion in order to let her know what we actually need on the agenda, and what makes sense, we can talk to her about what makes sense. The STEM Curriculum Development and Review Team presentation and discussion, enrollment numbers, the coaches' evaluation, both a plan and a target date for when that will be done and in place, the feedback on the definition of what the graduate, graduation rate actually is that we're reporting, a recommendation on coaches' stipends, either to PPC or to us under budget assumptions, assumptions, next month, and thoughts on the administrative structure going forward in the next two to five years, which might also fall under, I don't know if that would be budget assumptions, but thoughts on administrative structure going forward for the next two to five years. That's a lot, that doesn't even include anything that comes up in between now and next month, so if it's okay with you guys sometime before our agenda-setting meeting, I'll try to figure out a way to have us kind of prioritize, and...
Non-public this week, next month.
Yeah, and we also are gonna have a non-public next month, so we could be here till two in the morning, or we could kind of prioritize and push some of these things, you know, off, so I think, you know, I think by email, it's okay to do agenda setting, that's not decision-making, so I'll email you guys, and we'll try to figure out, you know...
Some of that stuff, it looks like it can be combined.
Under, some of it can be combined under budget assumptions, but the rest of it, I don't think so.
I was thinking along lines of the stipends and the evaluations and all that stuff, it's heading toward the right direction, I think, if we combine that stuff.
Well, the stipends, we have to figure out whether we're going to PPC with that, or whether that's gonna be under budget assumptions, so I think that's different. whether that's going to be under budget assumptions, so I think that's different. So I don't think that'll be a huge agenda topic, especially if it's just under budget assumptions, or either way, but still, so, I just, you know, like I said, it's, it's a lot, so we'll email and go over agenda items. All right, so...
Can I ask, if you even know, if it's possible to say, you think this discussion would take approximately this much amount of time, or whatever, so it might be a good way to help prioritize.
When I sent out the email, when we, when we have the agenda-setting meetings, we try to do that, but when I send out the email, yeah, we could, you know, try to put some times by it, and, yeah.
We might be able to knock off a whole bunch of small ones and save a couple of big ones, or whatever.
For November or something, yeah, okay, I'll try to put some times beside it as best I can. Okay, so, I guess, Rob, now it's time to make a motion. Uh, Dave?
Oh, sorry. Well, I just had, there are some things that I'm not sure that we would answer correctly or get right information, and the one, the one I asked about, the relation to class closed and classized courses offered, you know, the minimum policy, maximum policy, I know it's 15 and 22, right?
The 22 can vary.
Yeah, yeah, right, but, but, what I'm concerned about is what, you know, we, the approval process for going over 22 or under 15 on a regular basis, okay? And I think that has a lot to do with things that we would be interested in, number one, it would dictate, it does dictate curriculum to some extent, if you have a class at five, and, you know, you have to drop it or something, that dictates a curriculum, that's a board choice, really. If you, if you're over 25 and you need another teacher, that's a, that should be a board choice. So what I was wondering is if there's some way you could provide some of the data in advance with some questions that are, that are, that are pre-answered, or, you know, pre-asked, like, you know, what are the, how many courses, I don't want to go through the whole...
So Dave, can I just interrupt for a second? This is something that we've already, this isn't just because you requested it, this is something that the board has been getting on a quarterly or semi-year basis, and what typically happens, and I think I said that to you back in my email, is Rob comes to us with classes 15 or below, or 20, it was 20, and then we raise it to 22 or above, and with that, he provides an explanation as to why it's below 15, or why it's above 22, 22.
Well, can we pre-ask questions, because otherwise it'll come with the data and won't have those, you know, won't have the answer readily, you have to go back and that kind of thing, so...
Well, no, he has the answers ready, he comes with explanations.
He'll be prepared to answer all the questions I'm going to ask. Good, thanks, Rob.
Well, that, yeah.
And I assume that that'll be the case, and then I'll just shut up then.
I guess I'm not, I'm not sure, so you want him to send that information out to us ahead of time?
No, no, I just want to ask, I just want to submit some additional questions to Rob, I don't know, maybe we'll cover them already, maybe it's, it's unnecessary, actually, on my part, but I'd like to ask him some questions, so is he prepared?
Okay, so...
But he's prepared, that's all I want to do, is give you forewarning, rather than show up and then me ask you a random question that you don't...
Do you want to submit those questions before you see the data?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, then, yeah. Then can you copy the whole board on that?
Sure.
Okay, sure. I thought you wanted to see the data first, and then...
No, 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 I want to, I don't want him to come unprepared...
Okay, yeah, no, that makes sense.
...to report without answering at least some of the basic questions I would have.
All right, that makes sense, then, yeah, just email him the questions, but copy the whole board, so we all know, and maybe some of mine is on the...
So Rob can answer those questions, or are you just sending questions?
Just sending questions that Rob's prepared, yeah.
Well, I hope he comes to the board meeting with the answers.
But not over email, yeah.
That's why I just, that's why...
Oh, no, no, I'm not expecting the answer by email.
Okay. All right, any others? No, seeing none, any motions? Pim?
No, exactly.
Pete? Howard's been hogging all the seconds. So Pete seconds the motion to adjourn, all in favor, unanimous, thank you guys very much, and thank you guys for coming.
Oh, you forgot to ask if there was any more comment.
Well, we didn't, that's an action item.
Oh, no, we have a policy already, it was more just surrounding the senior athletic banquet. Yeah, not, not review the, the policy, but, but I think that's an odd, and refresh my memory, because, you know, it's been all summer, and we have a ton, and we've had a ton of other things going on besides, you know, just even this, but I thought that was just so he, part of like the coaches handbook, that like the fundraising...